Board, we have a very full agenda tonight, so just going to try to move through what we can quickly. The second item of business on our agenda is to review and improve minutes. We don't have any minutes to approve this evening. Item three is to review bills and sign them if we agree with them. We have three bills, Emily? We have one from Bowman for 50 Centec Boulevard on traffic impact study and site plan review, $3,240. We have a second one from Bowman for 142 Clinton Street, traffic impact study, site plan review for $1,031.60. And we have one from Graves Engineering, 50 Centec Boulevard for site plan review, $2,913.29, for a total of $5,299.26. So, does anybody have any questions, comments?
Move approval, Ms. Trump.
Excuse me?
Move approval, yep.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you. The next order of business is board member comments. Anybody have any comments?
I have no comment, Chair.
Okay.
No comments.
The next item of business, item five, is staff report. Mr. McGorwick, do you have?
Thank you. I do have a few items to bring to the board's attention this evening. So, I did provide the biweekly update that we provided to the select board, to the board for this evening. It details a number of items that our office has been working on. I did want to touch on a few highlighted items. Primarily, I'm looking at two of the major plans that we are updating, which is the hazard mitigation plan and the housing production plan. So, we are working to get the hazard mitigation plan out to bid, to select a consultant that will conduct that work for us in updating that. It's an important plan for detailing resources and planning processes related to weather-related hazards, as well as other kinds of features for hazard mitigation planning efforts. The housing production plan, we're currently in the data collection stage, wrapping that up, and will be working in the next few months to work into the public engagement process around that in order to update the housing production plan, bring that back up to date for adoption. That'll go out to the state for review after we've done the public engagement process. And then, in addition to that, we're working on also our local rapid recovery plan. So, that was a planning process that was done previously and related to recovering from COVID effects, the economic development recovery. We do have funding in place that will help us to implement some of the steps that were identified in there. One of the major goals that we are taking on, implementing, will be the placemaking initiative. We've gone through a number of those identified activities and done a lot of those planning processes. The placemaking initiative is one of the kind of remaining items that was identified that we should undertake in terms of activities to help with that. So, in the next several months, we'll probably have some more information on how those updates are going and the implementation of those programs. But I just wanted to point to those as activities that we have been undertaking. So, I think those are the highlights of what was on there, so.
Okay. Well, I think because it's so hot in here tonight, can I turn over running the meeting to you, and you can go that fast? Do we run this?
I'll do my best.
I have a quick question. Is the hazard mitigation plan as a supplement to the municipal vulnerability plan like MVP, or is this totally a separate plan?
So, it is separate, but we'll certainly take into account some of the other municipal plans. We also have, you know, coordinate, we're kind of coordinating the update of this plan, co-managing it with the fire department, who manages a lot of our kind of other emergency response plans. So, there's a lot of different planning efforts or documentation that goes at least similar veins of thought. So, this will coordinate with those other plans and provide, from our kind of municipal planning perspective, what the town can do in relation to those efforts. And it's a critical document, especially in terms of grant pursuit for resources for fire and police departments, as well as any EMS. It helps us to provide justification for asking for those grant funding requests.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Next order of business is a public meeting for a proposed retaining wall, de minimis change request, Galoka LLC. It's located at 226 R Grafton Street. Is someone here to present to that? Good evening.
Hi, yes. Good evening. My name's Mike Scott. I'm an engineer from Land Design Collaborative in Westboro, and
Sadhananda Das. I'm the president of the India Heritage Foundation.
Welcome.
So, I'm here on behalf of the India Heritage Foundation, who's at 226, 226 R Grafton Street in town. A few years ago, they received site plan approval, or it was a minor site plan approval, to reconstruct or remodel one of the structures on the site into their temple. They've been there for several years. As the congregation has grown, they've had, they have how many annual celebrations that you mentioned?
We usually have Janmas to meet, which happens somewhere in the month of August. But our temple inauguration happened last year in July, the long weekend from first to fourth. So, we this year added a first anniversary celebration of that. In fact, this just got concluded, and it was followed by a grand chariot parade, like we had a rathyatrah. Thanks to the town that we could do this, and that's what he's mentioning.
So, they have a handful of annual events that overflow the scale of the structure and the parking lot. And they've been doing this for years. They've actually received permission from the town to use a school parking lot one time. They've been getting tent permits and having, you know, notifying the town and fire and so on. But last fall, I guess it was last fall, Ms. Sheen suggested that because some of the work that had occurred at the site during, you know, to prep for these events had grown beyond what was originally approved, that they bring the site plan up to date. So, what we've done is we created one sheet, and it's really just to depict some overflow parking areas outside on the site, so roughly 100 parking spaces beyond the paved surface. And then, they constructed a retaining wall, which has subsequently been, you know, assessed by a structural engineer, Mr. Maroni, who's a Shrewsbury resident, if you know him, provided a report to the building commissioner. And we prepared this drawing just to, again, update what the town had already approved. So, we're here to seek that approval.
The parking is on the grass, right?
Correct. It's, right. So, the intent is that, you know, long-term, they have hopes and dreams of expanding, but in the short term, they have maybe three or four events a year where they end up needing parking. And since the bigger one is in the summer, the larger two are in the summer, they're able to park on the lawn. So, that's what they've been doing, and they can move vehicles. It's, you know, they keep the fire lanes open. The fire department has reviewed, has reviewed the event. So, it's really just getting them off the driveway and having room. And because it's a used outside areas that was previously approved, Patty wanted that, Mrs. Sheen wanted that documented.
Sure. Anybody have any questions?
Just one question. Are the grassy lawn areas owned by the India Foundation?
Yeah, they own, there are actually, there's three lots. They bought three properties. Their temple is this structure, sort of in the back. There's a dwelling in the front, and there's another dwelling back here. This is a garage, which I think is in the process of being demolished. And they have a, there's a structure up front that was a garage as well. But they do own all three properties.
Thank you.
The 95 additional parking spaces would suffice?
It's, well, I'm going to answer it this way. We depicted areas that didn't involve any tree clearing or grading, so these are areas that they can stack that many vehicles.
So, right now, for our festival, this is good enough. We don't, but in future, we definitely have plans of expansion, and we would submit the plan, and then, as for the approval, we will go ahead and make the future plans.
Thank you.
This is going to be like parking at Brimfield, right? At the Brimfield Field?
Yeah, essentially like a lot of farmer's markets that you see all summer long.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, it goes.
So, we need a motion to accept the change in retaining wall. Is it de minimis change?
Correct.
Yep, there'd be a motion involved.
Okay. So, you have a motion to that effect?
Do we need to open?
It's a meeting, it's not a hearing.
Okay.
Okay. So, is anyone make a motion?
I'm making a motion to that.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We're all done. I got another one. I'll talk to you tomorrow.
This guy, you're staying?
I got another one.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Not the big one, though. No one's here to see me.
Okay. Are you doing the South Quinzig one?
I am.
Okay. Chris, we need, somebody needs to read the
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Next order of business is a new public hearing for a proposed duplex, site plan approval and special permit by B&amp;M Affordable Construction. It's located at 422 South Quinzigman Avenue. The decision date is 90 days from the close of hearing. Because this had to be advertised, we have a notice that has to be read, so bear with me. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, 11, Thursday evening, July 11th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave. To hear the application of B&amp;M Affordable Construction, 46 Deerfield Road, Shrewsbury, Mass., 01545, for a special permit and site plan approval by the planning board as required by the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7.F.3 and Section 6. Table 1 to construct a duplex is shown on the plans entitled 422 South Quinzigman Ave, dated March 27, 2024, and prepared by Land Design Collaborative, 45 Lyman Street, Westboro, 01581, stamped by Michael Scott PE, consisting of five pages. The subject, the subject property is located at 422 South Quinzigman Ave, southerly of South Quinzig Ave and northwest of Lake Street. Consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's tax plate, 52 plot 054000. A copy of the application and plans and reports may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the planning board website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/ongoingprojects. Okay. Do I say it was advertised as a community advocate on June 21st and June 28th? Okay, so I just, okay. Okay, so we're ready to go. Mr. Scott?
All right. I'm still Mike Scott, and I'm here on behalf of B&amp;M Affordable. And they purchased the lot at 422 South Quinzigman sometime late last year, early this year. Their intent is to demolish the existing structure that is, as you view it from the street, the left side of the property and the garage that's at the rear of the property, and replace it with a duplex. So, there, you know, we noted in our application that there are a few other duplexes in the immediate vicinity, including the lot directly across the street. There are a few more, a few more to the rear of the property on Point Road, and then, there is another one up the road on South Quinzigman a little ways. So, it's certainly not out of character with the scale or the use in the neighborhood. The property, it's a, it's a small lot, and it's impacted by floodplain and wetlands. We're looking now at the existing condition plan, so this is the existing home. This is the garage. The green is the flood. There's also wetlands and a perennial stream, so the property has riverfront and a number of wetland resource areas. We filed a notice of intent and received an order of conditions. It's been recorded this week. So, the work's been approved by the Conservation Commission. And in general, the work, as I mentioned, involves the demolition of the home and the construction of the duplex. It'd be a single driveway entering roughly in the same location, but directly across from, and I apologize because, of course, I forget the street name now that I've moved off, Highland Street. So, there's good sightlines. It's, you know, an appropriate place to access the lot. Again, we're proposing the driveway to be directly across from, sorry, the existing Highland, again, making the sightlines easy to see in both directions. The plan shows stormwater system back that's been designed in accordance with the, with the conservation and town stormwater regulations. And I guess at that point, all the work, again, has been approved. It's up against the street. There's existing sewer and water. Those new services will be provided. Hours at the street. All the other utilities are right there.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
You said you got the blessing from Conservation Commission.
Correct. Yeah, they, yes, we've recorded the order. I actually sent it off to the town this week.
Chris?
No, so we do have this letter, this did go out to Graves Engineering. I don't believe we've received their comment letter back. So, we would request a continuance for this evening, but no comments at this time.
Sorry, what?
So, we are still awaiting Graves Engineering comments on this.
Okay.
So, we would be requesting a continuance at this time, but
Well, does anybody have any other questions this evening?
No questions.
Okay. I assume that you got the order of conditions. They approved all the wetland
Yeah, the wetland boundary was, the wetland boundary, the restoration. There's a bunch. I know this plan's really busy. I apologize. I have another one. But there was a lot, this was to demonstrate to the commission the extent of new alteration within the riverfront and the restoration. So, the green is the restoration. It's at the rear of the site. The red's the new. It's near the front of the site. All the calculations to support the necessary restoration ratio to the new alteration. DEP reviewed it. They've signed off as well, so. Just waiting for, I guess, Graves and you folks. And then, of course, the stormwater. But is it fair that, say that Graves is reviewing for stormwater?
Correct, yep.
I have another question. It's hard to read the plans on my small computer screen.
Yep.
Is the elevation of the house brought up on that site, or?
No. So, the house is more or less at street grade, and presently, it's a, it's a full basement. This will be a full basement. There'll be no walkout. And then, right now, the garage in back, which is the structure, this detached garage, that actually walks out at the lower level. But that's in the floodplain, so we've kept the structure up and at the current street grade. So, it'll be a gradual climb up. It's not elevated way above the street, though.
No, but I just, I was curious how high it had to go above the, all the wetland areas around.
Yeah, so we're up at the street grade, which is about eight to 10 feet above the wetland area.
Okay. We are going to continue this hearing, but does anybody, anybody who's here this evening want to ask any questions on this? One subject? Okay, so, I'm sorry. Did I see a hand back there? No, I saw somebody waving. Oh, it's okay. So, we need to request a continuance.
Yes, so you could just verbally request a continuance to August 1st.
All right, so I'll request a continuance to, what's your next hearing?
August 1st.
August 1st. And that's a Thursday?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. So
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to request to continue this hearing until the August 1st meeting at 7:00 PM.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
None? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? So voted. Okay, we'll see you in August.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You've got to read that. Next order of business is a new public hearing on a proposed mixed-use building, site plan approval and special permit, Ella Real Estate LLC, 6 Maple Avenue. Decision deadline is 90 days from the close of the hearing. Ms. Holstrom, would you like to read the advertisement?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. All right. The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July 11th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Select Board's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, to hear the application of Benjamin Keller, 6 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass., 01545, for special permits and site plan approval by the planning board as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7F3, to construct a three-story mixed-use commercial residential building. The special permits are required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7U4, Town Center District, front yard setback, Section 7U4 maximum building height, and Section 7U5IJ. Digital message board, as shown on plans entitled Proposed Mixed-Use Commercial Building, dated May 30th, 2024, prepared by CMG, 67 Hall Road, Sturbridge, Mass., 01560, stamped by David T. Feist PE, consisting of 18 pages. The subject property is located at 6 Maple Ave, southern of Main Street and north of Maple Ave, and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's tax plate, 22 plot 137000. A copy of the application, plans and reports may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the planning board website at www.shrewsburymass.gov.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name My name is David Feist PE. I'm with CMG. With me tonight is Ben Keller, the project applicant, and Ashley Cushing with MDA Architecture. And I'm not sure if you have the ability to put our plans up on the screen, or I did bring boards with me also.
Do you have that, Chris?
Yeah, I can do that.
So, Mr. Chairman, so can I give you, I guess, a brief overview of the project?
Yes, please.
And then, okay. So, currently, Mr. Keller, the existing building on the property, it's a very small property located in frontages on both Maple Avenue and Main Street. There's Keller Real Estate. It was there prior. It's currently vacant. The proposed project will demolish the existing building, and then, we're proposing a mixed-use building, which will have first-floor commercial space and two apartments above. Currently, there's really no parking, striping on the property. We're going to propose in for six parking spaces, as well as basically closing off the Maple Avenue curb cut and providing a patio on that side for the first-floor ice cream store, which is proposed at the current time, along with ADA access from both the Maple Street side, as well as the Main Street side, which was a little bit of a challenge, given the configuration of the site. In addition, we're maintaining a connection between the adjacent attorney's office, as well as, you know, to have the existing curb cut on Main Street will remain. With that, we're requesting basically three special permits. One has to do with the, there are two front yards to the property, and there's a minimum of, I think, 10 feet or a maximum of 10 feet. So, we'll be closer, further away than that from the Main Street site. As well as the maximum height, we're proposing 40 feet and three stories, and also to allow digital message board sign for the use as well. And I guess if you could, I guess, forward to sheet C1 as the site layout plan. Okay, right about there. So, as you can see on the screen, there's really not a lot of room on the property. The other thing, we're in the Town Center District, so I guess one of the main points we, is, has to do with parking. The two, each apartment is required to have 1.5 parking spaces. So, combined, you need three parking spaces for the residents. And then, the commercial space for the restaurant, based on the proposed seating, is required eight spaces for total of 11. In the Town Center District, with the parking study report, which we did provide in our narrative, because we actually are only providing six spaces, given the limited space on the property. But in the Town Center District, one of the things that attracted Ben Keller to this project, which provided a use that's consistent with what the Town Center District was for, which is pedestrian traffic. So, with that, nearby, the two additional things to provide additional parking, in addition to just the general, you know, there's sidewalks on both Main Street and Maple Ave, there's the town is proposing, I believe, a 10-space parking on Haskell Street, which is directly opposite off of Maple Street, as well as next door. I know Mr. Keller has also been having conversations with Attorney Slater next door to use possible shared parking during the off-hours when the lawyer's office is not in business, which would be ideal for the first-floor commercial on the weekends or, you know, after, you know, 5:00 PM during the weekday. With that, we're also proposing upgrades to the site stormwater system. Graves Engineering has reviewed. We just received comments two days ago, and most of them, I believe, we'll be able to address. A few are just plan edits, but the two main ones, I think, were related to parking, as well as, I think, the existing driveway. If you look to the west of the site, there's a heavy vegetation between the two properties. Part of that, the applicant's willing to cut that back, so we can provide adequate site distance. And again, we're not changing the existing driveway access. It's going to remain as is, but will definitely have to be improved to provide for safety. With that, I can either have the architect give a brief overview of the building, or I can answer questions.
Would you like to just give us an overview?
Sure. Are my sheets in?
Yep. If you could please forward, the architect sheets are at the back of it.
So, I might repeat a few of the things that Dave said, but I have a little overview here of the design of the building. Obviously, we're proposing a roughly 4200-square-foot, three-story mixed-use building with a ground floor tenant, being a small food service concept, which in current design phase is being proposed as an ice cream parlor, with second and third floors being single apartment bedroom, two-bedroom units. Due to the Town Center District regulations requiring ground floor ceiling height of around 12 feet, we can't really do that with the size of this building, with the two residential floors above needing utilities to run through. So, I think currently, we have it around between 10 and 11 feet. Also, we want to maintain like the traditional New England look of the building. So, we're requesting a special permit to allow for the 40-foot building height, as shown. It'll be a wood-framed building with portions of exterior walls being one-hour rated, due to their proximity of property lines. The ground floor commercial space is differentiated from the residential units by using a board-and-batting design, painted white, creating bright visual base of the building. And then, the two floors above would be dark blue clafford to differentiate the two uses. The gable ends, we chose like a shingle siding that The gable ends, we chose like a shingle siding that also matches the same color as the floors below. For the fenestration, I know there were some guidelines regarding that. We have large pane glass for the ground floor to let a lot of visibility in for patrons, and then very tall windows to allow maximum light for the residential units above, which kind of plays back to the old New England buildings, we needed to utilize more natural light. The wall signs on the exterior are about ten square feet under the allowed maximum, just to keep with proportions of all the fenestration and other building elements. And that would be on both Main and Maple sides of the building. And then the digital message board was actually something that was recommended that we include for pedestrian foot traffic to engage with the building. So we are proposing putting that on this little portion of wall at the accessible ramp. Handrails and guardrails can kind of look busy, so we tried to break that up a little bit with an actual wall that matches the finishes of the building, which we thought would be a good space for the digital message sign. And then the railing around the patio would be a decorative post rail to differentiate it from the guardrails on the ramp. I think that pretty much covers the design for the building.
Okay. Questions?
The parking situation. You said you have three for the residences and another three for the ice cream place. I know that this will promote food traffic, but what happens if I'm bringing in a car and more than three cars are available? What's going to happen?
One of the suggestions, I think, was to make it, either on the website or other, make it common knowledge and promote the fact that there are nearby parking spaces in either the new town lot or, again, if, as he works with the neighbor, which is directly adjacent to the right at Two Maple Ave, there's overflow parking during, basically after five P M. and on the weekends.
I just have a follow-up on that same parking thing. Suppose if somebody were coming on Maple Avenue, want to go to your ice cream place or restaurant, to use your parking, do you need to take a left onto West Main or Main Street and then left into the parking? You are supposedly closing out the curb cut on the Maple Ave, right?
Correct. They would have to either go around or, again, come from the other direction, you know, up Main Street.
Okay. Yeah, I have a question. Is the, I know the curb cut itself is on the edge of the road, but do you own where that curb cut is?
Yes. Yes, along, yes. On Main Street?
No, the one on Maple.
Yes. Yeah, both of them.
I'm having trouble seeing that with, where I thought the property line was.
I think there was a, there's a before, original.
Yeah, if you scroll back, it's one of the existing conditions planned at the beginning. Actually, that's probably not a bad one, because we've actually sort of highlighted, you'll see there's an area in the Maple Avenue right-of-way.
Right.
It's in front of the property, that's within the D O T. right-of-way. Because that's where we need to, in order to make the site A D A. accessible, we will be redoing that area, and we'll need a permit from D O T. for that work.
I was reading the plan wrong. Very good. I thought it was the other one, I'm thinking, how are you doing that? So on the, on the, on the parking, you're trying to fit into what the town center parking, the town center district was trying to do. So we knew that parking was going to have to be worked out. The parking on Haskell Street, currently, it exists, it's the bump out where the buses used to stop. So it is there, and it, it's, it's public parking, it's just we haven't done anything with it yet. And it will be, whether the B L. project goes through or not, because that's out in the street, so. If you can figure out a way to direct people over there. I mean, it won't be yours, but it'd be public space that you can.
Yeah.
So, you know, except for the, straightening out the parking situation, maybe the height of the building, but I don't, I don't see any problems with it, I'm sorry, how should I ask you first?
No, that's, I'm actually, Mr. Chair, just for the intent of full disclosure, I just need to make sure that it's aware that I have worked with the project proponent at my house about two years ago. I don't think it's going to sway any, any decision that I will make on this particular permit application, but I just felt the need to disclose that and make sure everyone's aware of that. I don't, at this point in time, have any questions. I was, I was going to ask the question about the curb cut, which I think is, is clear, so, okay.
Ask a question about the curb cut, though. If you're looking ahead to future possibilities, I'm sure Mast Dot's going to let you close it, because they would probably just assume you have no curb cuts. But what, I'm just going to ask you hypothetically, what if, at some point in the future, you were able to acquire the, the property there, that's on Maple? How are you going to access it if that's all?
The one at number two Maple, the attorney's office, is that?
No. The gray building, it's in back view now, it's on Maple Ave side.
Oh, the blue building?
Yeah, with the variety.
Yeah, they access, access it from the curb. They don't have parking, their parking is to the left of it.
So, okay, so you're not going to have a problem in the future by closing that, closing that driveway and then going back to Mast, Mast Dot. If you bought the land, you'd still have access to the other building for parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
No, you guys asked all the questions I was going to ask about parking.
Mr. McGovern, do you have anything?
No, I, I think I do just want to mention that that was one of, you know, I understand parking is a feature of the discussion tonight, and I, I just wanted to reiterate some of the points that we did identify that as a, as a challenge when the applicant came in with their conceptual plan. We did suggest that they look at, you know, the Haskell Street parking that was existing on public parking, as well as working with the attorney's office, as they've mentioned they have done. Looking at this site, using kind of aerial views, Google Maps, or some other websites that give even further back, looking at the traditional use of parking on this site, I do note that you can see, it's very clear that that parking is shared as a traditional use between the existing building and that law office building, you know, through the creation of those two buildings. So again, I think that just speaks to the point of what we were seeing as challenges with shared parking in a traditional New England downtown, where, whether they're informal agreements or otherwise, there's parking arrangements that may not fit traditional bylaws. So that's why we shifted to that narrative approach for applicants to have that discussion with the board, to find what is adequate parking in relation to the, the resources available to them. So, again, that is the decision of the board to make, but I just wanted to mention that that is, you know, the traditional use of the site was utilizing both parking spaces, both parking fields between those two. And so, although that can't be necessarily shown on the plans for these purposes, it's something to take into consideration, so.
I think also, new owners from several years ago, so.
Exactly, yep.
They're going to have to work that out.
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is anybody in the audience would like to be heard on this? Yes, sir.
Chris Kirk, Forty Westwood Road. The bill is going to be like right at the end of my street, so I know the area well. And one of the things I know is that Main Street turns into a parking lot during several times a day. And I don't know whether you want a lot of high traffic pulling into a very small parking lot. And suddenly, people realize that there's no place to put their car, and now they have to back out into a line of traffic of people leaving Saint John's or coming home from work or whatever. So I'm just concerned about traffic congestion. And also, I just to be absolutely certain that I've got the facts straight. There will be six and only six parking spaces abutting Main Street, no parking in front of the building. Is that, am I correct?
Correct, there will be six spaces off of Main Street and no parking spaces accessed off of Maple Ave.
Okay, okay, and, and, and the other thing, is there going to be like an A D A. accessible path from one side of the property to the other, from one street to the other? Is that the plan?
Yes, actually, that was the biggest challenge actually we had with this project, was to create an accessible entrance on both sides. There's an A D A. compliant ramp on the Maple Avenue side, and on the rear, we have, it'll be a walk-in A D A. accessible entrance on the Main Street side as well.
Okay. Has, has the proponent done like a traffic study? No, okay.
Wouldn't, who requires?
Doesn't require?
Right.
Right, yeah, we haven't required at this point, yep.
Okay. All right, all right, well, that, that, that was the main thing that I was worried about, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, comments? No? Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Well, we're going to close the hearing first.
Move to close the hearing.
Before we do that, I think if they're able to use the parking effectively on Haskell Street, if they get people to realize they can park over there, I think the major part of the parking issue is solved, so. And that's why we wanted the public parking here. So, but that's my opinion. Everybody else is satisfied with the explanation on, on the, on the parking? There's nothing else that we would have to hold this like tonight, right? No? Okay, then.
I think the parking is going to be tight.
It's going to be tight, but that, the whole downtown is tight.
Yeah.
In the way the zoning was created, it's not, it's going to stay tight. So, okay, knowing that, what's the pleasure of the board, like, close the hearing, what?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Second, yeah, motion second, any further discussion? If there's none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote? So vote it. Okay, you've still got work to do, you've got to straighten that parking thing out, but.
Yes.
Do you have any idea of timeline when you're going to, when you would start on that?
Hopefully soon, just wanted to get through all.
The fall or something?
Yeah.
Okay. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
You're doing what we wanted to do in the master plan, it's really the first test of it, so.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying.
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, good time.
Thank you, good time.
Okay, the next order of business is the proposed expansion of Mountain View Cemetery Site Plan Approval. The applicant is Town of Shrewsbury, it's continued public hearing. The location is sixty-five Prospect Street, the deadline is ninety days from the close of hearing. You already read that the last time, so you don't need to do it this time, so. Do you folks like to introduce yourselves and?
Sure.
Bring us up to speed on where you think we are?
Well, we have a slide deck, so we'll just go through it real quickly.
Can I share my screen? All right. What's that? All right. I am Rachel, I'm back again from the last time, from last month's meeting. Today I have with me Ricardo Ostrich and Dom Nakronaldi. And Ricardo is the Director of Landscape Architecture, as well as the, the project manager, co-project manager on this project, and Dom is the engineer at Record. And today, we will be, again, respecting, respectfully requesting the site plan approval for the proposed landscape cemetery. I just wanted to give you guys another overview of this project, just remind you where we are. We are, this is, this area over here on the screen is the existing Mountain View Cemetery, and this area over here is the southern area of Prospect Park, where we hope to be expanding the, into a landscape cemetery, which was a little bit different flavor. So I just want to overview, recap and overview the tree discussion from last time. Again, the trees were assessed by Davy Tree, and we have gone out and surveyed that assessment. We started off the project by going through and systematically removing dying trees, sick trees, or invasive species. And that's pretty much the, we've prioritized saving healthy and specimen trees during the design process. Another thing we wanted to just, we know some people wanted to know about historic features on the site, so we've highlighted a few of the walls, the existing walls that are within the project area that we hope to highlight as part of the project. And this was another item that came up last time that we wanted to really clarify this time, and that was the pre-excavated areas on the site. So essentially, all of the trees that we've marked on our site preparation planned for removal are still going to get removed all within the project. The area that we've highlighted here represents sixteen to twenty-five years approximately. These are ready-for-buryal, pre-excavated sites for full-body and cremated, cremated areas. And during this time, this allows the town to really assess for demographic changes or burial trends. The tree clearing, again, will still occur outside of the highlighted area, and those areas will be converted to meadow to help reduce the maintenance needs. And in response to comments, to the Greaves comments, we just wanted to highlight a couple of areas that we thought were, that we wanted to address just in person. So the first one here, that's the top right box. That one's probably the easiest one, just wanted to show that that, that area is actually not being cleared. There's actually no trees in that area, so we just wanted to explain that what's shown on the plans is actually the tree line, the existing tree line in that area. We thought that that would be better if we clarified it. And then these two on the left-hand side, those really show that the question came up that tree line was overlapping by, there are biofiltration areas. And again, we want to stress that we're trying to save as many trees as possible. And again, we wanna stress that we're trying to save as many trees as possible, so we will be working with the contractor in the field to maintain the tree cover as much as possible of the healthy trees, but still provide the biofiltration areas, which don't necessarily like work against the trees. That's what, that's what we wanted to say. And then a couple of these comments on the sides here. I know there was a comment from the public, just a little bit of concern about leachate and wetlands. And I think that our main comment is that that's not a concern with cemeteries in general, but especially not the cemetery. And then I would like to pass this over to Dom, who will talk about the culvert design and turning movements.
Before we do that,
Yeah.
I just wanna be clear. That section in the upper right,
Yeah.
which I'm assuming you mean by the logo in the, in the text, where is that?
This area? Oh, that's by the constructed wetland. I can show you.
We'll flip back.
Where is it on the site?
Yeah, we'll flip back. There you go.
So that's actually, that's back here on this, on this plan.
Oh, okay.
So, as you can see, like, from this plan here, there was like some concern from Graves that we were clearing within the wetlands, and that's not the case.
Okay. Thank you.
You wanna go back to the other?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Good evening. For the record, Dominic Rinaldi from BSC Group. So a couple of the comments that came up in Graves' peer review. I will start with, yeah, the culvert. So out on Boylston Street, as you may remember, there's an entry, sort of a maintenance entry. There'll be a maintenance garage built in that area. And they brought up, on the plans, there was what appears to be and what ultimately will be some small wing walls indicating a culvert under that new driveway. There is, in fact, a small, I don't know if I'm gonna call it a swale, because it's not really designed or built per se, more of a channel that conveys drainage along the edge of Boylston. The sidewalks in Boylston and the, and the street itself all drain into the street. That really just conveys stormwater runoff from the wooded area that will, that is ultimately part of the park. We will be obviously putting a culvert under that driveway. Right now, the only topography we have in that area is publicly available LiDAR, which if you looked at, doesn't actually show the swale. It's LiDAR, it's obviously limited. What we would request on the town's behalf to keep this project moving is that the board include a condition of approval that we will do, you know, full topo survey in that area and design a culvert and submit it to the, to the town for review and approval prior to the start of any construction. One thing that sort of came up in discussions with the town on that front was, and just to clarify in case you're thinking it, is no, it is not any sort of a protected wetland resource area. It's not a stream. It is simply a, for lack of a better term, it's a grass ditch along the side of the road. My guess would be that when they built the street, they built it up and just didn't regrade the hillside because it was already wooded. And that's what, what got left there. So again, we would respectfully request that that be put in as a condition of approval. Oh, yeah, and turning, there was a request for, to look at turning movements, fire truck turning movements in particular, in and out of the site. What we really looked at is the nearest fire station is just a little bit south of the site, so we really looked at movements coming in from the south and going back out from the south. So this first one you see is, is the movement in on Boylston Street. You can see the line work there. The, the fire truck body has a little bit of overhang off the pavement, but it's the body of the truck, which obviously is fine. That driveway isn't even curbed. It's, it's just a flushed driveway, so it can easily get up there. Can, you can see it can maneuver into the site and it would actually continuing out the other end, which it may or may not do. And then this is the movement, actually showing both movements in and out of the site from the south and to the south on the, what's it, Prospect Street? I don't know, sorry, I blanked on that one. And again, that, this driveway is plenty wide for both the, the in and out movements of a fire truck. And then finally, we have the driveway up at, that ultimately heads towards the park, where we're gonna build a, a small parking area up there. In this movement, there's a little bit of, obviously, there's a little bit of tire overhang onto, off the pavement. I will tell you that these, in my experience, these programs that we, we drive through sites are very conservative. And it's, it's just a tiny bit. If, if it were the board's wish, and certainly we can, or the fire department, absolutely, if their wish, we can easily sort of widen that up just a smidge with a little bit more pavement, make that curve a little wider if that's up to their request.
Is smidge a technical term?
What?
Smidge a technical term?
A smidge is a technical term.
How much, seriously? How, how much would you have to add?
Honestly, like, maybe a foot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, we're not, that's why I said, it's, the program's conservative. There's sort of limits as to how well you can drive it with trucks and fire trucks in particular. My experience is the people who drive those vehicles are much better at it than we are at driving through on this. So, I, I, in all, I've seen movements that I struggled to make work, and I've seen a truck driver just whip through the site, and I felt like a moron. But so, yeah, it's, it's based on the thing, it's maybe a foot on, on one side, so. And really, all the other, we have submitted responses to all the other peer review comments. I don't think there was anything, they were pretty straightforward, pretty simple. I think our responses are pretty thorough. Certainly, we're, we're here to answer any questions on those or any other topic if you have them.
Any questions, members of the board?
No questions.
I have a question actually for Mr. McGoldrick. Has, has the fire department looked at this in terms of the potential of, of doing this smidge section? Or is it something roughly?
So I'm not sure if they've reviewed it in, in that level of detail. They certainly would be involved during the construction phase when this goes to building permit and any of that, so.
That's something they've done in the, like, in the field to do.
Yeah. And if you wanted to include, again, another condition that, that has that in it, that's perfectly fine as well.
Okay. I'll send Mr. Chair.
Mr. McGoldrick, do you have anything?
Nothing further.
Okay. It's a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this? Yes, sir.
Chris Kirk, 40 Westwood Road. Has the, has, does the town have the, the updated version of site plans? Because I went to the Parks Department like a day or two ago, and they did not have the updated plans.
They have the updated plans.
Through, through the chair. The town hasn't, I don't know if the Parks Department specifically has them. When they go into the town, I don't know how they get distributed.
So the, so the, so the plans that are provided for the board's approval, the most recent plans are held in the Planning Department. They do get distributed at Parks, but whether or not they typically have that as a public record, I'm not, not sure of that. But they do get distributed to staff for their review. They're, you know, certainly aware of this project and, and working with it, so. But the custodian of the records for the planning board process would be the Planning Department.
And was this, is this project been reviewed for compliance with 310 CMR-10 regarding wetlands protection?
Yes, the project did receive an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission beginning of the year, end of last year.
December.
Somewhere around there.
Okay. And what is a bioretention area? And what also is a, a rain garden?
So, so bioretention area and rain garden are just the same thing. Two different words for the same thing. Bioretention area sounds fancier. Rain garden sounds softer and nicer. Sort of, sort of depending upon who you're trying to sell it to, I guess. But basically, what they are is shallow, generally small depressions that stormwater is directed to. They have a mix of, a very particular mix of soils in the bottom and certain types of plantings that the shallow basin itself allows sediment to settle out, and the mix of plants and soils actually provides higher levels of treatments for nutrients, metals, things like that, as it infiltrates back into the ground. And then for much larger storm events, they have a small berm overflow that, that allows those bigger storm events to get through.
So would these retention areas include a waterproof liner?
No, they're actually designed to allow water to go back into the, to the ground. They're actually, these particular ones, some can have a, have a liner. These ones are infiltrating bioretention areas, so they are meant to help provide. So runoff that comes off of the driveways and things like that increases in runoff, decrease infiltration of groundwater. So you wanna actually put that back into the ground to protect the groundwater table.
Okay. And the materials and the thicknesses of the various materials that are used in the bioretention areas are sand, peystone, gravel?
It's a, the, the planting mix, I don't have it handy. It's a mix of sand, topsoil. It's intended to infiltrate relatively quickly, but also has the organics and other material in there to promote the, to get the levels of treatment. I believe these are probably, probably have two figures. We're not planting like big trees or shrubs in them because they're relatively small, so I believe they probably have two feet of that soil in there.
Okay. And, and, okay. And is, are there overflow drains?
Yeah, these ones are actually designed to just overflow the berm in a level spreader, so you get low-velocity sheet flow as opposed to, we're not doing outlet pipes out of these.
And what's a broad-crested weir? And where is it on the, on the site?
Broad-crested weir is basically a, so weir is, is the overflow. This, that's what I was talking about, the berm overflow of, you know, the split between a sharp-crested weir and a broad-crested weir is sort of the width. These are about a foot wide, the berm. I believe generally probably about 10 feet wide, or 10 feet long. It's just a flat sort of level berm that allows the water to go over it. And again, sort of rather than funneling the water and promoting, and getting high velocities, it allows the water to overflow in a sheet-flow fashion, which has a low velocity, doesn't erode the downstream areas.
And what's a sediment filter and where is it located on the site?
Do we have sediment filters?
Can the gentleman just, just, we're getting a little interrogatory here. Can we just direct the comments through the chair, please?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I don't remember if we have, I mean, sediment filter is a little generic term. We definitely don't have any structural, like, we don't have any water quality units or anything like that on this site. This is all designed with sort of low-impact development, green infrastructure systems. There is a sediment forbay on the constructed wetland, which is basically kind of a shallow depression that the water initially comes into to take some of the sediment out, allows some of the sediment to settle out before it discharges into the, the larger constructed wetland.
Okay. And...
Mr. Kirk, how, how many more?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Try to, try to move along a little bit.
Are they all technical terms that we're looking for clarification on?
No.
All right. All right, let's go.
Also, the plan specifies an irrigation well. Where is it located?
Oh, no, there is no irrigation well. I think there was, yeah, there, I think there may have been some intent initially, but the current plans don't have an irrigation well. That was actually specified in our response to peer review comments.
Okay. And the electric vehicle charging stations in the parking lot?
Yep.
There are two specified in the plans. How many plan, how many do you intend to install?
Two.
Only two?
Two.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just in the parking lot for the park.
Therefore, the, therefore, the handicap spaces?
One is actually moved in the newest version of the plans, again, in our response to peer review comments. There is one in an accessible space and one in a non-accessible space.
Okay. And the construction entrances will be located where?
Temporary construction entrance, I believe, where, basically in the same locations that the actual, the ultimate end driveways will be.
So the...
So one on Boylston, two on, yeah.
So the construction entrances are Prospect Street.
Both on Prospect? Okay, my mistake.
Yeah.
I don't have the plan in front of me. So that the actual entrance on Prospect Street will be in the same spot.
Okay. And do you know where the, all the rocks that are gonna be taken from the stone walls and that are gonna be excavated, where they're gonna be stored during construction?
That seems like a means and methods question. Yeah. During, yeah, during construction, we can't...
You think?
For during construction, especially because it's a publicly bid project, because it's a town project, we can't specifically direct, the contractor will have to manage that.
Okay. And also, the entrance from 140 is going to, be passing over, over the, over that ditch where, where stormwater flows. And so is there a plan to place a culvert underneath that driveway?
Yes, we, we talked about that earlier. That was one of the peer review comments, and we've requested that the board include a condition for the final design of that culvert.
And you've set up a, a schedule for stormwater management inspections and so forth?
That is in the operation and maintenance plan that was, has been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission and reviewed by Graves.
Okay. Oh, just one last one. I presume that, that the buildings, the office and the garage are gonna be fitted with electricity and with, with bathroom facilities. So there'll be sewer lines, water lines, and electrical lines?
Yep.
Okay. And the water lines will be, since there's not gonna be an irrigation well on-site, you're gonna be tapping the, the water lines?
Yep.
Okay. And will the electrical lines be overhead or buried?
Ultimately, that, I mean, ultimately, that is going to be up to the electric company, but I believe our intent would be, and I believe what we've got on the plan...
The electrical lines will be buried as a requirement of Selco.
Drop off the nearest pole and bring it in underground.
They'll be, they'll be buried as a requirement of Selco on all the projects.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, that's, that's...
Okay. All right. Well, that wasn't too painful, was it?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I felt like I was in an engineering class.
So did I.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? I see a hand back there.
Good evening. I'm Chris Harris, 32 Boylston Circle. Last time I was here, I mentioned briefly about the displacement of wildlife, which is probably out of my hands. But mostly concerned, it kind of ties into what we're gonna be discussing later in the evening, is the increased traffic on Route 140. And was there any discussion about widening the road at that point? The reason why I ask is because people have to come down, students and buses, in the morning and take that left turn onto Boylston Circle, which is from the first house there. And there's been multiple accidents there. There was just one last Tuesday. I came back home and there were car parts all over the road on Route 140. And they have any intention of where they're putting that new entrance in? Are they gonna be widening the road at all?
So actually, that's a maintenance entrance, and we did, we explained that last time as well. So there will be very little traffic going into that entrance.
Okay.
Yeah.
But for safety's sake, has there been any discussion about widening that, that area of Route 140 so that it's, you can safely pass? Because when I pull into Boylston Circle, I literally have to have my left tire on that yellow line and say an extra prayer that someone behind me is not texting and, you know. Any discussion?
We're getting a little out of the scope of that work, but I think what you're asking is a much bigger project than you think it is.
Okay.
Yeah. And because it's a state number highway.
You can't just widen out a small section when you wanna do what you're talking about.
Okay.
That, that's not in the cards for a while, at, at least at this point.
Okay. Very good.
Independent of the, of the cemetery, it's just...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Right there, yeah. Yep. Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
I did just briefly wanna touch on a little bit of the, the comment of the displacement of wildlife. Certainly, obviously, there will be construction that is done on, on place for this project. But I just wanna reiterate, in, in terms of the, the intent of this project and this specific cemetery design, is actually really limiting and doing... cemetery design, is actually really limiting and doing very selective cutting of vegetation. And as the applicant discussed, the low-impact design. So in terms of during construction, there certainly would be, you know, some reasonable amount of displacement, you know, we can't say that that wouldn't take place. But again, this site is primarily looking at, in terms of the trees that are cut, will be highly selective, either dead or dying, and then beyond that, very selective within the site design. This project is primarily designed to not require a lot of grading, to not require a lot of tree cutting beyond what is dead or dying. And so in terms of the environmental sensitivity, I think this is very strongly in line with that. And then the end product of this, having done the low-impact design, I think will also allow for the, you know, cohabitation of wildlife to return to the site very quickly after the site is stabilized post-construction, so.
Could you remind us, how much of that entire site is the cemetery?
Sure.
It's escaping me at the moment.
So the entirety of Prospect Park is this, and I believe it's 70-plus acres, and then 19, 17, 19 acres.
For the cemetery?
For the cemetery.
So, well, why do that's going to be left in Snapper State, not even going into that?
Correct, that's right.
Okay, just wanted, didn't want people to think we were going to go in and clear the brush out of the whole thing. Okay, anything else? Yes, Mr. Ulrich, anything? No?
Do we need to make a motion to close this hearing?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? No, no, it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, so vote. All right, so we're done with that one, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business is 160, 142 Clinton Street, Prose Warehouse Facility, Site Plan Approval and Special Permit. And the decision deadline on that is 9:00 a.m. to close the hearing. Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Chris, would you folks like to open with a recap? How do you want to proceed? Do you want us to, or you want to?
I'm glad to, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Mark Donahue from Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant. With me is Haley Palazola from GFI, and I think Doug Hartnett from High Point is here also. We utilized a lot of your time at the last meeting. We believe that we presented all of the information requested by the board. We did review last time, and I would remind you that we've been through peer review of the key components of civil engineering, traffic and sound, and we have clean letters from those peer review consultants affirming that the work that's been done by our consultants is consistent. So we have submitted, because it was requested, a cross-section from a particular piece of property, which I assume has been made part of the record, a property on Flag Street, which the, you know, there was an inquiry about that and we submitted that. But at the close of the last meeting, we were not aware of any other inquiries or requests of the applicant to provide any information, so we're here to answer any questions the board has with regard to the application and respond to any concerns that any board member may have that would prohibit them from voting in the affirmative on the special permit and site plan approval.
Right. Did you want to address the 23 Flag Street thing?
No, I.
Okay.
So if I may.
Do you want to go into the presentation you were going to?
Whatever suits the board.
Sure.
Thank you, so the board did previously, at the last meeting, request a brief kind of update or overview from our office of kind of where we are in the process and some of the procedures moving forward, just for their benefit, obviously, throughout this process, but also for the benefit of the public. So I'm just going to pull up, I did prepare a brief presentation for this evening in relation to that. So part of the topics that I wanted to recover, cover very briefly, is looking at the requested approvals that the applicant did request, looking at detail of the studies, reports and plans that were provided, discussing decision criteria and what the board essentially will be asked to base their decision upon, and then going over the deliberation and the structure of a decision, how that will look and what the final document will contain, and then look at briefly conditions of approval if the board should so choose to approve this project. So again, just to reiterate, there are three approvals essentially that are requested from this, for this project, seeking site plan approval. This is a requirement of any non-residential use, which requires 20 or more parking spaces or 10,000 square feet or more of commercial space. They're also requesting a special permit under the Aquifer Protection Overlay District, that is to allow any non-residential use greater than 15% a lot area, or in this case, 2,500 square feet within the Zone 2 of that district. And they're also requesting a reserve parking authorization for 128 spaces, that is to provide a set aside of parking spaces that are engineered and integrated into the site, but ultimately are not constructed unless a need arises in the future. Those parking spaces, if approved by the authorization of the board, would remain as open space until they are required. Briefly detailing studies, reports and plans that have been provided, this isn't an exhaustive list, but looking at the required plans and studies that need to be provided for those approvals, and they were required to submit a site plan, a traffic study, a stormwater report, a fiscal impact analysis, environmental impacts report and a community impact report, all of those have been submitted. In addition to those required plans throughout the public hearing process, rather through peer review comment or otherwise, additional studies and exhibits have been provided, including the turning, a truck turning exhibit, WB 67, which is a form of truck turning study, a test pit plan, pipe sizing analysis, snow storage plan and a sound study. Moving into the decision criteria, and so I understand that this text is fairly small, I do have printouts of the text, that was a request from people previously, I'm happy to provide those to anyone who needs text of the, that are on the slides. So internal, so site plan approval requires the board to look at a number of items, including internal circulation, parking and loading, curb cuts. I'm not going to go through all of these in exhaustive detail, but lighting, fire service equipment, utilities, drainage. So all of these provisions are items that the board will be considering in terms of rendering a decision for this project in relation to the information that's been provided. For the special permit, Aquifer Protection Overlay District, they have a set of criteria that likewise the board will consider. In addition to those four criteria for the board to base its decision on, there are a number of Aquifer Protection Overlay District design criteria, which will need to be incorporated into the decision. Moving through those, I think what's important to note is that a majority of those are not either applicable, because they are not proposed nor allowed in the zone or the project as proposed. I did include that entire list for your review, but the ones that would be active are looking at earth removal, grading, filling. It's important to note that this is projected as a net export of fill site, impervious areas and stormwater management. And then the reserve parking authorization, again, for those 128 spaces, has a number of criteria that the board will have to base their decision on, looking at the percentage of parking, they can require, they can allow no more than 25% of the required parking. In this case, the 128 spaces constitutes 22%, so it's within that bound. And then there's a number of other criteria that are detailed in terms of that reserve parking that the board will consider. Finally, moving into the deliberation and decision structure. So the decision, for those who are familiar, who have read them in the past, there are three sections to a decision that the board would render. There's a section of procedural history, which includes the record of submitted materials, many of which I noted earlier, but that also includes the public comment that was received, as well as any other materials that were provided through the public record process, and as well as project and meeting details. Two arguably be more important sections are the findings and decision sections. The findings include a general narrative of the project, as well as specific narrative for those decision criteria findings that were identified, in which the board will base its decision upon. It will include votes and narrative on the waivers as requested. There are no additional waivers that are requested as part of this project. There is the reserve parking authorization, which would be required, so that decision and vote of the board would be reflected in the finding section prior to a formal decision vote. And finally is that decision section, which will include a vote, the record of the vote of the board, as well as conditions of approval, which would only be included upon approval by the board, and I'll move into what those are. Just a quick caveat on that, in terms of those narratives that will be provided, the board is required to provide approval for, provide narrative for any approvals of waivers or decision. They are not required to provide that narrative for denial. So those sections, that narrative would be pulled out. Conditions of approval, so standard conditions, we have a list, a set of standard conditions that board members are probably familiar with. The board maintains that set of conditions for all projects that are granted approval with slight adjustments according to each specific project. Notable in relation to this project are the EV parking requirements, which are newly added, onsite lighting, being downlit and shielded. We do have snow storage and de-icing restrictions, trash and loading door operation restrictions, as well as incorporation of MEPA and MASDOT requirements. This decision, the bylaw does add conditions which would be incorporated automatically for approval in the limited industrial district, so those would be incorporated as a matter of the bylaw's direction. And then we do have additional conditions that are set for each specific project, and we do break those out. There's four steps to post-approval, typically managed through our office in coordination with other town departments. We have essentially four major check-in steps. That's a sign-off prior to construction, conditions that are required during construction, conditions that are required after construction, and then conditions that are required prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. I wanted to highlight a number of applicant commitments in terms of those conditions of approval. We've briefly discussed, either through the narrative or in the public hearing process, a number of conditions that I think that if the board seeks approval are important to note that the applicant has committed to. One of the, the first one is MASDOT coordination on a number of items, primarily looking at the old Clinton Street improvements. That would include additional fencing or evergreen plantings, if MASDOT approves those enhancements to that, to that improvement along old Clinton Street. Looking at signage regarding truck idling restrictions was a comment that was received in the public hearing process on that old Clinton Street improvement area, essentially across from the convenience store. Looking at off-site intersection improvements, there's a number that have been proposed in relation to this project as it relates to the highways and interstates. The off-site improvements, again, looking at MASDOT approval, the applicant would coordinate to include signage for interstate crossing industrial park, truck route, to facilitate additional signage for that route towards the highways. Additional commitments, looking at the report to source all, this report, the source of all fill prior to it being brought onsite. Again, this is a projected net export, so there may not be any fill brought onsite as a matter of this project. The applicant will provide a transportation demand management plan, which identifies actions to further reduce vehicular trips from a number of different actions, both by the applicant and potentially by the town. Post-occupancy noise study, applicant has committed to doing those noise studies prior to the beginning of operations, as well as six months post-occupancy, and the board is reserving the right to require additional mitigation as identified by those noise studies. There is a prohibition on hazardous materials, underground storage, fertilizer and manure. Those are part of those industrial, the bylaw prohibitions for that area. And then finally, a post-occupancy traffic study is committed to, again, one study prior to operations, then at the 12-month mark, the 36-month mark and the 60-month mark. So that is a significant timeline in terms of post-occupancy traffic study that has been committed to, for that 60-month period, post-occupancy. So with that, that concludes what I would like to provide.
Okay, anybody have any questions on what, Mr. Crick? Pardon? Okay.
I just have a question, cheers.
Excuse me?
I just have one question.
Yeah, sure.
I was wondering if you can just update us on the MEPA latest status? I know, I mean, you have been working with them and MASDOT, and the work may not start until MEPA issues their final certificate, but just for the benefit of the board and the people, if you can update us on what's the latest on the MEPA status?
Sure.
Through the chair, yeah. So we received our draft environmental impact report certificate in June, which we were scoped for, it might have been in May, sorry, time is fading me, scoped for the final EIR. Also a part of the FEIR scope was a request for a special review procedure, an SRP acronym. We have since filed that, that appeared in the monitor and is dated June 14th, which can be found on the MEPA website. It basically bifurcates the two projects, the west side of Clinton Street and this project, 142 Clinton Street, in hopes that we could move forward with 142 Clinton Street, knowing that we would have to come back and start over the process with MEPA on the other side of the street, which was always our intent. We are currently working on the FAIR scope now, and we hope to file that by September 1st.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else? For the moment, I'm good, so. Before we open the public comment, I just want to say, tonight is primarily intended to be a recap of what we've done for the past seven hearings. We're asked that comment delimited to new items, and hopefully we let people speak who haven't had a chance to speak before, before other people who have spoke multiple times speak. And I'm going to ask that we try to keep our comments to two minutes, and I have my official timer to do that. And this evening, we're going to see how it goes, but once somebody makes a comment, if there were other people who haven't made a comment yet, I'm not going to call on somebody to come back up again before other people have not had a chance to speak, so I just... So I just, I don't frame that up for you, but having said that, this is a public hearing.
You can speak. One order, we're free to speak at any public hearing, Mr. Chair. Whether people have spoken before or not.
Yes, and I control when people speak.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I acknowledge the people.
But you brought it up first, Mr. Chair, that everyone in this room has the opportunity to speak. You can set the bar of two minutes and provide that, but everyone in this room has the opportunity to speak, whether they've spoken or not about this project.
Well, I'll tell you what.
Am I correct?
I didn't say they couldn't speak, okay? And I'm letting you speak, and quite frankly, I think what you're saying is beyond a point of order. I didn't say no one could speak. I said, we're not gonna have people come up multiple times while other people haven't had a chance to speak yet, and that is what we've traditionally done in this town for years. And the chair, the chair is the one who runs the hearing, not you, so, thank you. Okay. So hopefully we can get off to a better start than that. Anybody who has a question or a comment, if you'd like to come up to the podium?
I'm Charles Garbini, 24 Westmont Road. I have probably 12 things to say, but I've narrowed it down to three, and I'll be brief on each one. Number one, clearly there's a problem with traffic. There is noise from that traffic, there's pollution from that traffic. The traffic also, because it's trucks, will cause considerably, considerable damage to roads over a period of time. The second thing is, this project is gonna be very close to a town water source. No matter how much we do to protect, there is a chance of failure. And once there is failure, then there is no way that that water is ever gonna come clean in a decent amount of time. That is a big concern. I ask you to turn your attention to what happened down in Hyannis over the weekend, where there was a site of a water site that was next to a fire training area. What they had done in that fire training area is they were using a water retardant that had chemical in it, that leaked into the water. Now they're finding people that have cancer because of that tainted water. Pray that then it never happens in Shrewsbury. The third thing is my empathy for the people that live there. We are community, and when you look at the definition of community, and I looked up several definitions of community, one of them clearly said that there is a caring for one another. And I'll openly say to you that if this project goes through, my heart is gonna be crying for the people that live in and around that area. I would not want to be one of those people, and I would challenge anybody in this room to say, yes, I would like to live there, right next to this big warehouse. Think about it, this is a moral issue. And maybe we're not supposed to talk about morality anymore, but I will. And if I'm wrong, then I'm proven wrong. I rest my case. Thank you.
I have a question, and forgive me if it's been asked and answered.
Could I just ask?
Oh, sorry, Corey Bovee for Holly Lane. This is my first time attending a planning board meeting, I've only been in Shrewsbury a couple of years. It was mentioned that it's part of the plan, that there will be a noise study after the fact, and that if there's a problem, then there is mitigation that's required at that point. And then there was listed several points of traffic studies that were going to hurt, occur at various points following this project, but I didn't hear anything about mitigation if those traffic studies show negative impact. What is required there? Is it just so we know, or is there an act?
No, 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 there's stuff that's done, but I'm not sure what it is, I'm not sure completely what the scope is.
Thank you. So, in terms of that, so I gave a general, that's why I wanted to, you know, kinda preface that those are kinda general language in relation to the specific conditions that would be written, and certainly the actual conditions themselves will have much more detail. So the, the commitments for the noise study include, with those noise studies, a number of general treatments in excess of what has already been proposed, that the board can rely on to, if those studies show that there's additional mitigation that's required, we're also broadly allowing the board to find, related to those decisions, if there, if there's a broad mitigation that's not identified already, the board can consider that, if it's identified in those post-occupancy noise studies. In terms of the post-occupancy traffic studies, those thresholds are set forth by MASDOT, and what that typically is, is if the traffic is 10 percent greater than what is projected by the reports, the applicant is required to return to the board and discuss mitigation measures in relation to that. Certainly without seeing specific increases of traffic beyond what is proposed, it's impossible to design or to provide what that mitigation would look like without seeing that in relation to the improvements that are already proposed, to see what those mitigation steps would be done. In projects that have done prior, we have seen some where they're typically lower than that 10 percent, or even lower than what was projected, but the, those studies do still provide us with, you know, steps that can be done. So for example, we have in the past, in the recent past, seen that it could be timing of lights that is required, is suggested by those noise studies, that timing of lights is then adjusted in coordination with the applicant or MASDOT, you know, depending upon where that treatment needs to occur.
But the same holds for traffic period, not just noise.
Correct.
Yeah, because we, I mean, there was mention that there was mitigation required if we failed a noise study, and what I was wondering is, is mitigation required if we fail a traffic study?
Correct, it would be.
Yes, okay.
Hi, Vanessa Parks, Colonial Drive. Just sort of following up on her question, I was wondering what the thinking is between having a noise study only at six months, but having a traffic study at one year, three years, and five years? Because I think there's obviously the chance that noise will increase as time goes by.
Yeah, so the, so I should clarify slightly, so the, the noise study is, that's a standard timeline that has been done for other similar projects in town, that's actually the timeline that was provided, and was pulled from the conditions for the Centec Park North project. And although it is a six month, that's post-occupancy and post-operations, and so the baseline study is done, we will have a contingency, because there are two building sites that are proposed with this project. So, similar to that project, Centec North, should the second building not be constructed fully, that second study will then wait until operations of both buildings commence, and it would be six months post that. So, once the project is fully tenanted, six months from there would be when that study is compared to the baseline study.
So there could be two noise studies, essentially, one at six months and one...
There would be two, correct.
There would be two, okay. I just wanted to note that Centec obviously is not in the middle of a residential area. Thank you.
Centec is pretty close to rural residential. We did a Butts, the Boggs Street neighborhood, which is rural residential.
Did you, I couldn't even hear what you said.
Talking about this, the location of the Centec North property being close, close to a residential area, it might, that was...
Does anybody else, yes, sir?
Thank you, I'm Hi Ginsburg from Valley, 8 Valley Forge Drive. I want to talk about the planning board's document that you passed out with regarding the special permit for the aquifer protection overlay district, states that the planning board is responsible to ensure that this project will not adversely affect the public water supply. It can't possibly be overstated how serious and important that responsibility is for the planning board. I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that any layman would be able to make that determination, and I'm unaware that anybody on the planning board is a hydro engineer. I can't imagine why we have not hired a hydro engineer to determine whether or not this is actually going to impact our water supply, and what we will do if it does, so thank you very much.
With all due respect, sir, in my previous life, I was the director of water and sewer operations, City of Worcester, for 38 years, so I know a little bit of water.
Does that make you qualified to determine that this is safe? Personally, you would be liable if it did not, if it was not?
I would put my two cents worth that I think it'd be, I live in Shrewsbury, so, you know, I don't want to drink bad water.
Anyone else? What, I'm sorry?
So, Mr. Chair, I do just want to address that comment, so that is a frequent public comment that we did receive in terms of the hydro geologist, and asking that question in terms of the protections for the aquifer. And I did, I do want to express that our department, and I know the board does not take that lightly, in terms of rendering their decision. So, as the gentleman notes, that is a criteria that the board will have to base their decision upon, in relation to this project's impact to, or potential impact to the aquifer and the drinking water supply. I think it's important to note, again, as was discussed at length in the public hearing process, as well as these, the peer review reports, is that stormwater has been reviewed. The existing project has no stormwater protections in terms of operations on the site, or the stormwater entering the site and going into the aquifer. Those protections are not in place. The project as proposed does provide for filtration and treatment of the stormwater, of the operations on the site. It captures the stormwater, it treats it prior to it being discharged to the aquifer. I did, again, having this as a significant question that was continually, continuously asked, I did pointedly have a discussion with both town engineer, with our peer review engineer, at, on this topic. And I think it's important to note that, from that discussion, what was explained to me, is that this project is designed to meet water treatment levels that are established by DEP, prior to any, any water that is brought onsite, prior to it being discharged into the aquifer. So at that point of discharge, the water that is being discharged should be at safe levels to be recharged into the aquifer, per the design. The applicant is seeking no waivers in terms of those standards for water discharge beyond the DEP standards.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Andrew Bissonette.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Oh, sorry. Andrew Bissonette, 1 Pleasant View Street. I live directly across from this proposed project. The main thing I'm interested in is hours of operation, because of the noise, and also, talk about traffic studies. Has anyone talked about a foot traffic study? That is a main corridor for people in that neighborhood, walking, out in their afternoon walks, their morning walks. I walk my dogs there every morning, down Route 70, between 5:00 and 6:00 a.m., and I can tell you, people drive like animals at that time in the morning, on a rush to get to work. I've almost been hit multiple times. So, those are some of the main concerns I know from people in my neighborhood.
As far as hours of operation, that has not been determined yet, because there's not a tenant yet. So, it's possible it could be 24 hours, it's possible that it could be 12 hours.
Can't hear you, 24 hours? Can't hear you, 24 hours? Can't hear you in the back of the room.
So if I could go back on that aspect, the 24-hour thing, as the gravel pit runs now, they're shut down by 5:00 p.m. the latest, as is. Saturdays, they're shut down by noon time.
Right.
People are at work, they don't hear anything, they don't hear tailgates from dump trucks slamming, they're not bothered by it. If you're home during the day, you do. 24 hours, 7:00 o'clock at night, 10:00 o'clock at night, you're trying to relax, go to bed, and you're hearing backup alarms. I don't know if anyone heard, but there's been annoyance out in the parking lot all afternoon. I mean, multiply that by hundreds of trucks, almost a million square feet of warehouse being put in there, in this neighborhood. It doesn't only affect Shrewsbury, it affects the neighbors in Boylston also. And that property of Butts, Flag Street in Boylston, you are gonna be in someone's backyard, literally backyard, backing trucks up. So, that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Do you want to speak, Chuck?
Yeah, if it's okay.
Sure.
So, I'm Chris Katz, from Flag Street in Boylston, and just to add on to that point, this warehouse, both of them are gonna be in my front yard, and we spoke about a potential redesign, but on the north side of the north warehouse, there's a loading dock directly adjacent to my front door, my children's bedroom windows, and the sound wall stops before my property, and every single morning at 7:00, six days a week, the backup alarms start going off in the machines and wake up my children. I'm awake, but it wakes them up, and it's frustrating already, so I can only imagine 24 hours a day, seven days a week with those backup alarms, and no mitigation to the sound to my, my home. When we brought, bought the property, we had almost a half forest separating us from Worcester Sand, we couldn't see or hear anything. When GFI purchased it, when they started processing back there, right in my front yard, they cleared all the trees, so now I have a clear line of sight to the six-day-a-week construction, and I really don't want to hear that seven days a week. And I'm sure all my other neighbors don't want to hear it either, it was bad enough when I was building my house, let alone a million square feet of warehouse. That's that, and then just a couple other things, if you check state record, they let you know who has done things the wrong way, and I'm pretty sure I read that one of the subcontractors that was hired was using unlicensed operators in some of their machines, and the state fined them, and I really don't know if we can trust unscrupulous subcontractors doing it.
I think that's a little bit out of the scope of our control, I hear what you're saying.
But how can you trust that the contractors they choose are gonna do things the right way to protect the water when they can't even use licensed operators in their machines? And to be clear, not Worcester Sand, not one of their subcontractors that was hired.
I'm sorry?
They're big machines down there, I see them every day.
Yep.
So it's not a little skid steer or a little family-owned backhoe, it's a 20, 30-ton excavator, probably bigger.
Can I, I don't want to interrupt the comments, are you?
I'm done.
Yeah, then you can sit.
What do you got?
I have, I have a question, because actually, on your particular address, I did follow up on a discussion that came through a selectman about, about your location.
Okay.
And, well, getting all the technical part, extending the wall, unfortunately, we're told, is not gonna help, because your second floor is higher than the wall, is one part of it. You are 40-something feet higher than the ground elevation, the finished ground elevation, so we're told by the traffic engineers, and when, if it does get built out, we'll, we'll see if they're right, that part of that being down that far and being, I'm just telling you, the traffic engineer told.
So right now, there's a 100-foot barrier of all their processed material, the excavators are behind that.
Right.
And I can hear them every morning, if I'm home, at 7:00 when they start, and I get messages from my wife and my eight-year-old son that's learning how to use the iPad, that they're working over there, I'm awake, what are you doing, Dad?
I appreciate it, I've been down there, so I know the noise that you're talking about.
So, one of the things that happened on the other side of Boylston, when Kraft put... in those big warehouses over by FedEx, they redesigned to help the neighborhood out and all the people involved to make a project that worked for everybody, and they had controls that they could do. A simple reengineering of how people go in and out of there is going to save at least half the neighborhood, it's not going to save the mains, or the Route seventy and above side, but half of the neighborhood wouldn't get that constant traffic, the constant backup alarms, just by moving a few loading bays and an access road.
Can I, can I ask you? It was my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that whoever cut the trees down, only cut them down after they asked if they, if you had a problem with them cutting them down, or your wife?
So, when they were operating the gravel yard, the same way that it has been for a hundred and something years, cutting down trees wasn't a big deal. There was no talk of a warehouse in my front yard with loading docks that were going to be there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They had talked about a biomedical facility, which would have been Biomed, I think, I forget the exact thing that it was, maybe somebody can correct me, I have a lot going on. But they talked about a facility that wouldn't have been as high of traffic and wouldn't be the constant backup alarms.
I understand, and there's still, we don't know what's going to happen there. This is being designed for the highest use, it could be something less. What happened with the project that they happened to do on Route twenty, it ended up being smaller than what was permitted. We don't know that yet until we have a tenant.
One of the things I saw about permissible noise levels abutting residential neighborhoods was the allowed decibel change. So, right now, if you go to my house from the hours of ten o'clock until six fifty-nine in the morning, it's quiet. I bought the land from the son of the original owners, who bought it in nineteen oh-five, I think, and it's been a quiet neighborhood. I can't imagine how much the value of my land is going to depreciate with a warehouse in my front yard that I can see with the truck traffic. And it's just a huge impact. I am all in favor of doing something there, it needs it, but we need to do something that's right for the community. When I was a kid, they wanted to put the Solomon Pond Mall there, and they said, even though the money's good, it's not good for this community, and they voted it down.
You're confusing that with the one that went with the post offices. The one that, the one that was being done when Solomon Pond was being built was in a competition with, because I was, I was...
Oh, it was the same thing. I was like four, so.
Well, I was like one time, so.
I won't ask how old you are.
I can tell you, I tell you what happened, there was actually, about that particular one, there was, there was excitement about having that because they were being held to the same kind of standard as what's being held now on that aquifer, and people were happy that they were going to get that aquifer protected, which I know nobody believes, but it weren't protected in the, in this finished plan, and it would have been with that mall that was going to go in than what it is now. But people can believe what they want. But what happened with that one, just so you know, it, what, that particular one was not turned down by the town. That one, with the people that were proposing that, were in a competition with Solomon Pond, the people who were going to develop Solomon Pond, and whichever one got the, the approval first, was going to be the mall that was going to get built because this region could not handle two of those malls that big. And the Worcester Sand project couldn't get permitted fast enough. That's why that one went. The other one, you're right, the one over where the post office is and, whatever the name of that, I can't think of it. Down, the Orel Houses are?
Town.
That one, the town said to, basically to take out. You're right.
Are we, we still talking about the same thing?
Yeah, sorry, all right. Last, last thing.
We're just, I'm just explaining what you're saying.
All right, guys. Can I do one last thing, or are we?
Well, anyways.
One more quick one?
Sure.
So, when my kids starting, getting woken up by backup alarms, or I start getting woke up by backup alarms, and there's, who am I going to call to complain that the sound levels are way too high? It's already bad enough, I was hoping to sell my house and retire to...
Well, for sure you can call town manager's office if, if it's definitely, and I'm not saying it's not, but if it's project-related, yeah, call town hall.
Is there anything that can be done for any of these issues, or is it going to be just me calling and complaining with nothing happening?
I, I don't know, but I...
So, I do want to know again, as, as stated, that the sound generation of this project has been studied, the noise levels have been projected and are within DEP limits. In addition to that, as stated, the applicant has committed to post occupancy noise studies and mitigation that would be included along with the findings of those studies.
Right. But we'll, we'll know, when it's in operation, if there's a problem, then, you know, hopefully we'll be around, take a look at it, and see what can be done. I can't, we can't make commitments now on something that we don't really know what's going to happen yet.
But conditions can be placed upon approval that mitigation can be taken sooner than needed. You can put special conditions onto this project?
We're going to, if this is approved, there'll be conditions on sound that are put in, but whether or not that's enough, you know, we, you know, we think it's going to help, and it's going to, it's going to do what it's supposed to do, but if it's not, we'll have to revisit it. That's what the point of going back on it is.
Sorry, everyone.
I'm sorry. But I'm going to, we're way beyond two minutes, so if you could, but somebody else speak?
I never hit start, so.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Andy Barnes, One Fifteen Clinton Street. I just, I wanted, I know I've already spoke before here, I just wanted to come up because what I wanted to do was piggyback basically on what was already said. A lot of people are concerned about sound, a lot of people are also concerned about diesel fumes, I'm sure a lot of people are going to bring that up as well, but in sticking with sound, one thing that seems to keep coming up is like, there's all of this mitigation around the sound that's being generated on the site, right? That's the DEP law that I understand that we are, that they are needing to abide by, that the levels are, the DBA, the adjusted level, must not go more than ten above what they measured before, which was like thirty-two or whatever. The thing is, the trucks will not teleport into the facility, right? And there's going to be trucks coming down, there's one entrance, which happens to be right in front of my house and some other people's houses here, it's right in front of that, and there are going to be, the adjusted DBA level will be seventy DBAs, because that's what comes out of a diesel truck. That's assuming that they're not revving the engine or hitting an engine brake, right? And if they come down, if they come down from West Boylston, they're going to be jay braking down that hill, no matter what fancy sign we put up there, and the decibel levels will reach much higher than seventy DBA. And that will be right in front of Shrewsbury residents' houses and Boylston residents' houses as well. And I, I just wanted to point that out, like when we're talking about sound, and, and the other thing was, what was also brought up in the last meeting was, oh, everybody's getting all worried about sound, and forty-two DBA is actually just a normal conversation. We're talking about a normal conversation measured at the second-story level of a home, which is your bedroom. That's why we're required to measure there, right? So, yeah, a normal conversation isn't as loud as a diesel truck, I totally agree. Is there anybody here that wants a normal-level conversation happening in their bedroom in the middle of the night while they're trying to sleep? Right? I know, I don't. I don't want that. And that's, that's at forty-two decibels, forty-two DBA, right? The backup beepers that we were hearing earlier, I, I was trying to listen, because when I heard it, I was like, asking myself, is this louder than the current conversation that's happening in the room right now? I don't think it was. Everybody noticed it, and it was lower than the volume that is a normal conversation that is supposedly forty-two DBA, right? So, I think what we're talking about with sound, you know, it's like, well, you know, we measured it, and they measured it, and there was a peer review, and it's like, yeah, but the trucks don't teleport. That's all I got, thank you.
Anybody have anything new that you want to bring up? You could speak, I'm not...
Hi, I've never, I don't think I've...
No, 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 I meant any new topics.
New topics, yeah.
Sure, no, you're more than welcome.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Barnes, I also live at One Fifteen Clinton Street. I grew up in Shrewsbury, I teach in Shrewsbury. The first gentleman who spoke talked about community. I feel really emotional on this topic, so forgive me. We moved to our house specifically because of the neighborhood. Some people are like, oh, Worcester Sand and gravel's right there, like, how is this different? Other people talked about this already. It closes at five o'clock, it's not open on the weekends much. It's a really quiet neighborhood. It is the perfect place to raise a young family. There's woods around, the, there's a great area for biking. One of my children has family asthma, allergies, and eczema. I'm worried about the diesel fumes. My uncle died of an asthma attack. This is like very personal for us, and so I really, really am concerned, and I know that there's going to be studies long-term, and we'll check back in. This doesn't feel good for residents, this doesn't feel good for my neighborhood and my family, and I'm so invested in this community, and I know everyone sitting here, that's why you're in the chairs you're in, it's because you're invested in this community. And so, I, I really want us to think about what's best for our community and not what's best for business, and I know that's, that's why you're here, so thank you.
My name is Deborah Mulliken Kilpatrick, I live at Ten Jacobson Drive, and this is probably going back to a topic that was mentioned earlier. I just have a quick question as far as if the wells become contaminated, and I guess I needed to direct it to you, due to activity on the warehouse site, what's the responsibility of the occupant owner for this contamination? And if they bear no responsibility, how can there be an incentive to take care to avoid this happening?
I'm not sure I'm qualified to legally answer that question, but...
Well, I have a follow-up question that relates to that, if I could add it, because maybe this will help. What's the alternative water sources that exist for immediate access by the town if the wells get contaminated because of GIF?
City of Worcester.
I beg, I'm not so sure.
We have two connections to the City of Worcester.
My husband looked into that recently, and Worcester says no.
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's a guarantee from the planning board?
Used to be there, right?
My husband's Dan Kilpatrick, he's the one that submitted multiple emails to the planning board, and he investigated whether Worcester Water would be happy to supply us with water.
Would they be happy?
I'm sorry?
We, Worcester has done it in the past.
So, then what's, what's the alternative if the wells become contaminated?
We, I know we have connections to Worcester, okay?
If, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, but...
I think we're a little far afield from site plan approval.
No, we're not, you're sitting on our, you want to build on the aquifer, that's not far afield.
It's a legitimate question of where the money, where the water will come from. We have connection to Worcester, and, and the...
And they would supply the whole town of Shrewsbury with drinking water and other uses?
But my understanding from when I was on the Board of Selectmen and a Water Commissioner, that in emergency, they would supply water. That was my understanding. And it's been, it's been, the connection's been there for a long time. So, I, I can tell you that.
But who bears the responsibility if there's a contamination though on this site?
If, if, if a landowner contaminates their site on anything, whether it's a house or it's a factory, they're responsible.
Well, who's, if they're going to do the testing, then how do we know?
Because they have to, they have to submit the test results, and it's overseen by DEP, that this all doesn't happen in a vacuum.
No, I understand.
And DEP oversees this stuff, just like in, in Shrewsbury, you could make the same, you could, you could make the same comment, how do we know that the water's coming out is clean? We were dealing with the heck before we knew what was happening. People said, how do you know we're, we're really doing it? We had to test it, we had to provide it to the state, the same kind of stuff happens.
Right, well, I'm, I'm asking, I guess, from the standpoint that if the owner developer is responsible for the testing, why wouldn't the town want to do their own testing to know for certain?
The town most likely would do their own testing if there was, if there was some kind of a spill, but it's...
But I mean, to leave it up to an owner-operator of that property, I mean, you just said that if your house contaminates the water supply, you're responsible.
Yes, but if, if you can, not, I wasn't speaking specifically about the water supply, but what I meant was, if you contaminate your land...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if you have a house, you contaminate the land...
I'm responsible.
You're responsible.
Right.
That doesn't mean that you can just go do something and there's no oversight, the state's involved in it.
I hear that, but one of the reasons why I brought these questions up on Slide ten under the applicant commitments, there is not one word about water safety listed, not one word.
Okay.
So...
We haven't even decided what we're going to do yet.
I understand that.
And what, what the conditions are in an approval aren't only what the applicant says they're going to do, they're what the planning board puts in and says they're going to do.
Well, I just, I just hope that the board appreciates that the water is something that affects every individual in this town, and while I appreciate the community that abuts this project and the heartache that they're going through dealing with all of this, water is something we all deal with every day, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen Bohinki Sewell Street. And just to reiterate what Deborah was saying, I did see a study online that was done in 2016, and it was paid for by Mass DEP, and it was to look at the alternate water supplies for Shrewsbury. And there were about six alternatives, and they went into great detail, and they were all very expensive and very complex, and a lot of it was predicated on the fact that because we have an aquifer, our water is not compatible, say, with the MWRA, so there's a lot of complexities in there. So, I think, I sent an email to Dan Rowley earlier this week, and I asked him for the plan, what is the contingency plan if our aquifer does get contaminated? What do we do? What's the plan? How does it happen? Do they bring water to us? And could he share that plan with me and with the residents, because I think that would make everybody a lot more comfortable if there was a concrete plan that if the aquifer gets contaminated and the water is undrinkable, what do we do? What's the plan? We need to know that. And you know what? That it hasn't already been contaminated is probably a miracle. And I understand that this development might come in, and they're going to do their best management practices and their basins and the rain gardens, that all sounds good, but accidents happen, and they're bringing in a whole new level of different things over this land. First of all, they're covering forty percent of it in pervious cover where these warehouses are going to be sitting. Now, that takes away, you know, the natural recharge, now we're going to have artificial recharge, but what happens if a truck comes in, has an accident, and diesel fuel is spread all over the place, and the aquifer is contaminated? What is the plan? We need to know what the plan is.
So, I'm not going to go into great depth on this in terms of a hypothetical situation, but what I do want to point out is that in, in part of this design process for that specific example is if a truck spilled diesel fuel on the site, as, as was kind of... example is if a truck spilled diesel fuel on the site, as was kind of discussed earlier, this design is capturing storm water and water onsite and it is treating it prior to it being discharged into the site. What's included in the design, which was reviewed and suggested by our Department of Public Works, is actually shut-off valves in the system, which would, in the event of an incident, allow the water to be captured in the pretreatment phase and then dealt with. Again, if there were then further contamination beyond that, it is likely that the town would pursue any and every option available to them to help mitigate, in a water emergency situation, any of those matters. As was stated much earlier in the process, again, there's a number of plans in place throughout the town in terms of various contingency plans for a wide variety of disasters and, you know, mitigation efforts. I would encourage, as we update our hazard mitigation plan, residents to engage and place that as a comment, which frankly, we probably would do anyways, in the hazard mitigation plan. Again, to further allow the town to pursue resources related to potential well-water contamination. In relation to well-contamination, I think that is, that is a broader town responsibility to look at, not just the specific site. This site does include infrastructure related to addressing that. But beyond that, I think there's also methods that we can look at as a town to further protect our wells beyond what is proposed by this project.
And I understand what they're doing. And I still say a truck could come in off the driveway in the areas that's not treating the water and then it's in the wetlands and then it's in the aquifer. So I still think we need to see a plan. And if the aquifer was contaminated, how, how are we going to get water? Is, you know, are those connections in Worcester ready to go? How long is that going to take? Is it already built? Is the piping there? Is the distribution system ready to feed us our water if we don't have any? That's what I think we need to know. Accidents happen. So that's all I'm going to say on that, but I do just a couple of the quick things. I wanted to ask GFI when they were going to submit their final environmental form, and I think you said September first. So my question to the board, the chair, will you wait for MEPA's response to the final environmental impact report before you close the public meetings?
Not necessarily.
No?
No.
So what-
So a condition, a condition has been proposed to incorporate any findings from MEPA within the decision and any requirements of MEPA into this site plan approval.
Get it, get added into it.
I'm not sure I understand. So why I'm asking is, so obviously the residents would want to read the final environmental impact form that the developer submits. And would we have an opportunity to ask questions and talk about that in a public hearing?
So the MEPA process is separate. It does include public comment periods. Again, it is separate, but we have, through a proposed condition, we will be incorporating any findings or any recommendations from that final EIR into our decision as if the board, you know, mirrored by the boards. So the approval is contingent upon those being incorporated into the final plans.
So it sounds like the public hearing will be closed sometime in the near future, even tonight? Could that be?
Possible.
Okay.
It's possible.
All right.
The public hearing processes throughout permitting, not just here, most of the time run independent of the MEPA process. And the boards that are appropriate, not only in our town, in every town, make their decisions and make their findings and their conditions. And they're always, there's always the contingency if the state says you have to do something else, you have to do something else.
Yeah, I just felt like because we had the public hearings and the MEPA, the EIR and the report was going on at the same time, it just felt like a good place for us to be able to ask our questions. So I feel like if the public meeting hearings are closed and the MEPA report's not going to come out till sometime after September-
But you have input into the MEPA process-
Right.
Because there's still a hearing. The hearing, your input into the MEPA process is through the MEPA process.
Right.
And that's still, that's still going to happen.
Yep, okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify that for just as process. And then, just in closing, I've said this before, that I'm really saddened and disappointed that the town brought this project forward. My hope was that the town would have bought that property back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and in alignment with the master plan and the climate resiliency, whatever, that they would have bought that land and changed it into a baseball field or a park. I know the land needs a lot of improvement. We know that, it's a disaster. But I'm not sure putting two massive warehouses on top of the aquifer covering almost forty acres is the answer. It has its own risks. We all know what they are, the pollution, the traffic, the wildlife, the wetlands, the noise, et cetera. But to me, the biggest failure here is allowing this development endangering the health and safety of our residents, and I truly believe that, and destroying the peace and quiet of a really nice neighborhood. I feel for my neighbors more than myself, to be honest with you. So, thank you.
Greg Richards, sixteen Hickory Drive. Quick story, actually, and a comment about spills and unintended consequences. Actually, one of my customers up at Cedars with the hummus, when you talk about spills, they get a lot of olive oil delivered and-
Can I add something? Is this going to be specific?
Yes, it's coming back, yes, sir. Don't worry, Mo. I'm only going to take two minutes, it won't take too long. But the point being was, they have deliveries there, they have backup, they have alarms and bells and lights to indicate when you fill the tank. Two to three times per year, they still get olive oil spills all over the actual driveways and the parking areas there, five thousand gallons of olive oil, because the truck driver is playing Candy Crush in the cab and it happens. And that happens multiple times a year. So I understand there's manual shut-off valves, which you would have to manually turn off if there was an event to cap where the well is. It's not automatic. So I want to make the point that things do happen, it happens pretty frequently out there. My second comment is that at the last planning board meeting, Mr. Donahue made a comment that there'd been a total of over thirteen hours of public comment regarding the project. But what he failed to mention was, he also had well over thirteen hours of information that was provided on behalf of his client, you know, GFI. Now, once during that time that his client, Stephen Goodman, explained to the residents how the product, how this project benefits our town, or personally addressed any concerns expressed by the residents. As he is here in the audience today, I welcome Mr. Goodman to come to the podium and make his case to those that matter most, the residents of Shrewsbury. Thank you.
It's time to bring this back to order. I represent GFI. I and Ms. Palazola speak for GFI. If there's a question about this project, feel free to ask it.
Hi, I think some of you know me. I'm Caroline Maycomber, Precinct Nine, Town Meeting Member. I have some questions. I can address them to Mr. Goodman or to the-
You can address them to the chair.
To the chair, sir. Okay, Mr. DePaolo, welcome home. So I had a new question.
I've been back for a while, thank you.
Okay. So one of my first questions was, have we done any environmental justice community studies? Because based on where this appears to be on the map, it looks like sort of a butts Great Brook Valley, which I believe would qualify as environmental justice community. Does anyone know the answer to that?
That's not included in MEPA.
Yes, it is. Whether it's MEPA or not, it's still a question I have. I'd like an answer.
So yes, it's been conducted.
Okay. And what were the findings?
Those are, those are available through the MEPA process.
Okay. So this is not my background. My basic research showed that an environmental justice community is one that is typically a community that's made up of people that are in sort of an underserved population, maybe English not as a first language. So there should be some type of special consideration given to the types of buildings that you put in their community so they don't become a dumping ground? So I guess what I'm trying to get at is this feels like a dumping ground on the poor residents of Great Brook Valley and the gentleman that spoke earlier that has it in his front yard. And I know we've talked a lot about contaminating the aquifer, but I also want to kind of speak on just the pollution aspect of this. I also have a son with asthma and as you guys probably all know, I'm on Walnut Street. And we've had a lot of issues with Route Twenty with all the trucks and now there's the Centec warehouses and now there's the one that's going to be up off, you know, bordering Grafton. I thought this was supposed to be a biofarm or biomed project as well when it was first discussed. I don't understand when Shrewsbury became like the hotspot for warehouses. I don't know why that's what we want to be known for. The other piece of it is, now that this was my first year as a Town Meeting Member, I've started to really closely look at our budget. And we spend, I think it's what, like a hundred fifty million-ish a year? So my question is, as far as like tax revenue goes, how much are we going to be getting from this building project? And is there some other type of mixed use? So I know, I still don't fully understand mixed use, but I've heard Mr. McGoldrick talk about it a lot. Is there some other type of mixed use that we could have for this land? Whether it be we need to rezone for that? I just don't know that there's a single person who lives in town that is in this room that feels that this is a good choice for our town, for our children, for our future. I do recall from one of the last meetings when we asked the question about what happens if there's a spill, who's in charge? And the response we got was, well, the fire department is the first line of defense. And to me, I'm sorry, but those people have a much more important job to be doing than running over to shut off the emergency shut-off valve there. So one other piece was, I don't know if anyone realized this, but this project is going to be as big as sixteen football fields. I don't know about you guys, I would much rather love, I would love to see more baseball fields in town. If you have any kids that have ever played at Dean Park, you know there's not enough parking there. They already have so many people in town, you literally cannot park when your kids have a ballgame. Would love to see something like that go up there instead of a warehouse. But as far as, you know, when we look at what is the future cost, right? We've had a lot of, well, there's hypotheticals, we'll get to this, the noise studies, you can't even really do a noise study until this is all said and done. It's all hypothetical. But what about the future cost, right? Kids' asthma treatments? Are we looking to become a superfund site? I don't think that's something anyone here should aspire for us to be. That's the direction I feel like we're going in and I, for the life of me-
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
We're not talking about a superfund site. We're not talking about-
It's like two hundred truck days, those are.
You know, I really think respectfully, we should keep it to the proposal that's in front of that, in front of us, which is a warehouse and distribution center or maybe something less intense than that. Let's not, let's not conflate it, no, I don't think it's fair to conflate this now to a gas generation station like down in Quincy that's right in the middle of a neighborhood-
Do you want to come Quincy? Because I feel that's the direction you're taking us in.
That's not, that's not, that's not what they're, that is not what's being proposed.
What I would ask is that this committee very, very carefully deliberate and consider the interests of the people in this room who you represent. And I have said this before and I will say it again, I was asleep at the wheel. I've been busy raising my kids and working full-time and it wasn't until this past year that I really started paying attention to what was happening in Shrewsbury. Things are not looking good. I have major concerns about things that are happening here, whether it's the schools, the budget, the building, the development. I mean, I'm at a loss. I don't know what else to do. We are here, we are showing up and we're being told to limit our comments to two minutes. You're saying our voices don't matter, but they do. This is our town too, and that's why we're all here. This is deeply important to the people in this room. And so I would just ask that we really consider, again, that future cost. Have we considered the cost of lawsuits that will be brought against the town for the pollution, for the things done to our children? Have we looked at that? I mean, as far as the financial impact study, have we looked at other towns that have faced similar issues where the townspeople clearly didn't want a development, but the town bulldozed it through anyways? What happened to that? There must be other towns that we can compare this to because it seems to be the norm across our state these days.
I think, I think you made your point.
Well, I have two more pages, hold on. So I just wanted to ask one, one last, well, not one last. So I heard you guys referencing the whole MEPA process, which I'm not familiar with. That's not what I'm in the trade of. I don't really understand how their process works, but am I to understand that we should also be going to Mass EPA meetings to protest this and have our voices heard there as well? Is that how their process works? We're supposed to be going to their hearings because our public hearing is done after tonight?
You can make comment into the process, yes. You can make comments and, you can submit-
So just emails? We can email the Mass EPA to let them know our opinion, but they don't have public hearings like this?
I don't think so.
Does anyone know?
They do not have public hearings.
That's scary. All right. And then there was also something brought up about bifurcating these projects, which to me sort of feels like, you know, we're just going to do this small portion and build here and then we'll figure out what's wrong and fix it in the second one. Once you've started something, it's really hard to put the genie back in the bottle. So I'm kind of thinking that's probably not the best idea. But the other piece was, I just wondered if we've got any comment from the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, our Forestry Commission, the Community Preservation Commission, the Historical Commission? I just think there's a lot of other parties that I don't know if they've weighed in yet.
Conservation has been involved. Other departments that need to be involved have been involved in the process.
Which departments would those be? Is that just your opinion or is it based on the town files?
Engineering Department, the Water and Sewer Department, the Fire Department, they all have input into this process throughout.
And have we have that in the agenda minutes that are buried on the website somewhere, I'm assuming?
No, so that, so all of those departments are notified upon any project submission. We also hold monthly meetings for all land use-related departments where we review every project before the planning board for comment from all of those departments.
But we have no requirement that they actually attend and provide their professional opinions?
They, yes, they do. And yes, they do it again before a building permit is actually issued.
Okay.
So, you know-
So that's documented somewhere in the meeting minutes that these particular departments have provided their input on the project?
In the license applications, the permit applications, they, they submit their decisions or they have meetings with the proponents and they tell them what they want and they have them incorporated.
Are those open meetings with the proponents? Because I'm assuming you mean meetings with GFI, so shouldn't those be open meetings?
There were some meetings that are staff meetings that aren't public meetings.
And that would just be staff of the board?
No, staff.
With proponents.
So that would be staff, so staff regularly meets to discuss all projects. Those, they are also, throughout this public hearing process, similar to the public, able to submit either written comment or through those meetings, we review these projects and whether they submit that comment to the applicant or do so through our office. We do submit those comments as indicated. Engineering had comments in relation to the infrastructure for this project. It's just one of those examples of how that comment was submitted through our office. It was a recommendation to the applicant and the applicant included that infrastructure element in their redesign of the plans.
Okay. So then, the other question I have, specific, I think, to a comment Mr. McGoldrick had made, was as far as the sound study. And I was just trying to understand how we would do a sound study for something that has not yet been built.
So the sound study has been conducted. The sound study has been peer-reviewed. It's available on the town website. In addition to the sound studies that have been conducted, the applicant has committed to, again, post-occupancy sound studies, which would be done prior to occupancy, upon completion of the construction of the project, and then six months post-occupancy. And that has been standard in the town for similar projects.
Okay, so let's say, for example, at the six-month study that they say-
Mrs. Maycomber?
Can I please, please, let me just finish the line of, the line of reasoning.
So it's a question that was already asked of if mitigation would then be allowed? And yes, mitigation would be included.
Okay. So then, the last piece that I really had was just as far as that September one environmental report, I just want to reiterate, my understanding is that this is the last public hearing, even though we don't have final word from the Mass EPA yet on their findings.
Correct, but they're- Correct, but their findings, as indicated in the conditions, we do have a condition that their findings and any requirements that they have will be incorporated as if this board themselves required them.
Okay, all right. And then last question. When are you moving to Shrewsbury?
When are we moving to Shrewsbury?
If I could afford it, I might.
We're getting close to ending for this evening, because I think we're drifting a little. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Sandy Bigelow, 23 Flag Street, Boylston. I, I just wanted a bit of clarification, because I'm not understanding, I see that there are conditions for, for approval, which are all good, but I don't understand why we can't have a condition, one of the conditions being no third shift, if, if there's-
It's industrially zoned. They're allowed in that, in the industrial zone to operate that way.
Okay, thank you. I didn't understand that. Thank you. Have a good night.
What, what do you, what's, what does the board want to do? Wait, sorry, hold on a second.
Don't sit down.
What does the board, you can stand.
Don't sit down.
Good, good, sir.
Ed Bolter, 12 West View, town meeting member. I have a certain amount of sympathy for this gentleman here, just because I'm too, I'm tired of circling this drain, but for different reasons, I'm sure. I think one of the frustrations you're hearing from we the people of Shrewsbury is, and particularly as it relates to the aquifer and water issues, is we couch most of the conversation in reactionary terms, right? And I think what, I know what I'm looking for is a level of proactivity around the management of this site if it gets approved, and I hope it doesn't, that puts the onus, we the people need a throat to choke in this town, as for, as far as dealing with that, if something should happen. But proact, proactively, meaning if we're collecting runoff and it's being treated and all this stuff, we should be out there as the town, the DPW or somebody, should be out there testing it on a regular basis to try to catch things before they get reported, because sometimes there's a delay.
The water is tested daily.
Okay, well, that's good. And are those results posted?
You're talking about drinking water, right?
What's that?
He was talking about drinking water.
I'm talking about the runoff water, sorry. Okay? So I think what we're looking for is proactivity, because when, when the crap hits the fan, right, and the plan didn't go as expected, and right, everybody is kind of like, ooh, what happened here, right? We all have to wake out the wallets and pay $15 million for some new shiny new water filter, right, to deal with it, right? And what we're trying to figure out is play some defense here, and we're looking at this government to play defense for us, and I'm not really feeling that, okay? Maybe some- And that's what we want to see. And throughout this whole, you know, soap opera, I haven't seen anything proactive, and, you know, and, you know, I'm, you know, I can't spend eight hours a day reading all your stuff, but, you know, I think that when we come to a meeting like this, we, there should be a report, a proactive plan, right? Here's what we're doing, right? We're testing the water daily at the well, we're testing the runoff stuff monthly, whatever it is, right, intended to be, and I know your use case is not quite settled yet, right, but there's certain things that we can define now, right? For instance, do we have, or I should say, do you or some department in this government have the authority to require the operator of these warehouses to report every weigh bill that comes into that building, right, to see what was shipped there? Right? And inspect that periodically. There are things we can do, and I, I'm feeling frustration that, you know, you're depending on Massachusetts Department of this and whatever. You want the commercial revenue, great, go get it, but you're going to have to do some work to prove to us that it was worth that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Lori Dawson, 42 Sewell Drive. I am very concerned about the aquifer, as others have stated, but on Sewell Drive and many of the other properties in that neighborhood, we are on private water and private sewer, even though we still pay water tax for some reason that we don't use. I am very concerned about the town being proactive about these issues. Several years ago, when, so I live right on Newton Pond, when the dam was rebuilt, it was rebuilt somewhat lower than it had originally been, which allowed more sunlight to get to the bottom, which allowed much more weeds and algae, and many of my neighbors, I think some of them are here today, went to meeting after meeting after meeting, asking what the town could do for us. So I'm really concerned what happens to my well and my neighbor's wells if there is an accident. We don't have the town behind us. It's clear we don't have the town behind us. At an open meeting, when I asked about the Newton Pond overgrowth of weeds and algae, a committee member said, in an open meeting, you can, if we, if we could get them to test it, said, you can have a bake sale to pay for that. Does anyone here remember that? So forgive me if I don't trust that the town has our best interest at heart, especially those of us who are kind of in this rural area, remote area, on private water, private sewer, whole additional issue to the aquifer. Although, I mean, they're related, coming from the same source, but it seems like I would be responsible for paying the tens of thousands of dollars to deal with my water issue.
No. I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Shogat Anwar. I live on Sewell Street. I really have a plea, and if you want begging this committee and the town administration, for the sake of our children and grandchildren. And the plea is, if there is any possibility that this project is going to contaminate our water, if there is a reason to, even a simple, short reason to believe that the noise is going to create health hazard for our community, I beg you not to get this project going, not to have this project in Shrewsbury. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Deb Draper. I'm on Bosworth Road. I've heard, this is my first meeting, I've heard several times you saying that, well, we don't really know what's going to be going on, whether it's going to be two big buildings, or one building, or whatever. Again, it was originally supposed to be biomed, which was, how it was presented when the zoning was changed. If we don't know, and you're going to vote on it, and you don't know, because obviously you're telling us what you have, then how can you vote on it unless you can take it with, let's put it, the worst possible scenario, 24 hours, potential contamination, diesel fumes, which we get now, and noise? If you don't know, how can it be voted on? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
You can make a motion. What do you want to do?
Let's move it to end it.
You want to end it, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. Paula Tebow, at 121 Clinton Street. I've spoken before, but I do have a couple new topics that I just want to make sure the planning board is aware of. I just found out the other day that the middle driveway of the proposed site is going to face directly my property, and there has been no mitigation for headlight glare put in place for year-round protection.
We actually- We actually had talked to GFI about that, and they've agreed if Mass Dot will let them put a fence up there to screen it, that they will do it. That would be a condition of a decision. The only problem with that is, it's up to Mass Dot whether or not they allow it. But we did listen to what you said, and we, and we have been trying to find a solution, and there's an agreement to put a fence up, but we have to get Mass Dot's permission to do it because they control that land.
Thank you, and I, I do understand the applicant has been helpful in responding to some of my questions about that. But I also wanted to clarify, so it sounds like there's going to be noise study and traffic study post, but is there air pollution study at all?
So at the last hearing, and I believe that actually the hearing before that, I did make comment that the town has reviewed that concern. We see that air quality is a town-wide issue, and the town is committing to pursuing the grant for those air quality sensors in relation to air quality townwide.
And I did note that the MIPA certificate did recommend or encourage the applicant, if possible, to erect sound and emission barriers along the truck route. I submitted that as one of my questions, and I wasn't sure if that was able to be looked into.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The MIPA certificate, the May MIPA certificate, did recommend that emission and sound barriers be erected along the truck routes to protect residents, and I just, that was one of the questions I had submitted, so I just wondered if that was taken into consideration.
So I, I can review that. I apologize, I haven't been able to for this meeting. But again, as, as stated, any of the comments or findings, recommendations coming out of the MIPA process from that condition are being incorporated into this project, so.
And I, I would just like to clarify that the MIPA review is not a permitting process. I know that's been brought up before, that they do leave all the permitting decisions up to the permitting agencies, so that they're aware, fully aware of their environmental impacts of these projects. So I really respectfully beg the committee, the planning board, to keep the public hearing open, to be able to have discussions about this project. It is significant. The environmental justice was brought up. It is a Worcester neighborhood, but also the entire Shrewsbury surrounding the warehouse is an environmental justice neighborhood. I think it's very important to keep the public hearing open, so that we have opportunity to discuss and ask questions. The project is right across the street from my house. I, I heard putting up the no idling signs in front of J&amp;M. There's a no littering sign there, but I regularly pick up lottery tickets from my front yard, daily. So I, I really, really encourage everyone to think, a lot has been said about community. My other neighbor who taught my son spoke about how emotional this is, and it is extremely, it's really affecting the people that live right there. So I really, I'm begging you to keep it open for public hearing, at least through the MIPA process. Thanks.
I'm sorry, but personally, I don't agree. I think we've been doing this since December. We've covered just about everything I think we could have possibly covered. I think your concerns on a lot of these things are valid, and, you know, hopefully that we're, we're addressing them. But the, the, anybody who owns a piece of property has the right to develop, subject to what the zoning allows. This is what the zoning allows. This is, excuse me, please, this is what the zoning allows. You can't just tell somebody they can't do something because you just don't want it. If, if the zoning is set up to allow a certain thing, whatever that might be, they can, they can do it. That, that's a different story. The zoning was changed. No, it, yes, you're right. Yes, you're right, except the zoning was changed. It was changed at town meeting a couple of years ago. This is- Okay. I'm gonna make a recommendation, or a request of members of the board, someone to make a motion to close the hearing. And I'll leave it up to you.
You can just tell them, just because you don't like it, you can tell them that you can't, that's your job to tell them that you can't, as the planning board, you can and should reject the proposal in defense of the residents of Shrewsbury.
Thanks very much. Rachel Missile, 23 Cypress. I just wanted to speak to a bit of asymmetry here, and the asymmetry is that you have people who are professionals at doing this work, who come before you, and they hire professionals to speak on their behalf, and they present to you in a very professional way, and they do a very good job. And it is incumbent upon residents to figure it out. It's incumbent on residents to pay attention to meetings well in advance of anything happening. It's incumbent on residents to educate themselves quickly on something that professionals spend their lives building up to. And this board is volunteers as well. I, Mr. DePaulo, I know you said you know, didn't have a life, and you were reading through everything, but I know that not everybody can read through every piece of paper, and I get that. So I just would like to ask that you take into consideration this asymmetry when you're making your decision, because you have a very polished, pretty picture, and then you've got sort of a ragtag group, who, we've all come together and tried to put this all together as quickly as we could to try and understand, and I know you say this has been going on for several months, but these several months does not a professional make, even though there are a lot of us. And a lot of this group has come on pretty recently, because they've just recently become aware. So I'm just asking you to put the weight of that asymmetry into your considerations. I know that you have probably already made up your minds, and this is my last appeal to you, to be more considerate of the people who are trying to figure this out along the way, and who will be the ones dealing with the consequences. That's all I'll have.
What are you going to do? I'm going to ask to close the hearing. Somebody can make a motion or not.
Motion to close the hearing?
Have a second?
Leave it a gravel pit.
A second? No? Then I'm going to ask you at this point, then, to let's at least continue it.
Motion to continue.
Okay.
May I be heard?
Yes, sure.
If one is going to have a continuance, it should have a purpose. And I'm at a loss to understand, with all due respect, the purpose of continuing. The chair started the meeting indicating that it was open for comment on new matters. You recall in June, we reviewed with you the topics that we had heard through the first few meetings. Everything that has been said tonight falls in those columns. You aren't asking us for any more information. My concern is sooner or later, this meeting is going to have to be closed when somebody still wants to speak, and I think that's tonight.
I don't disagree with you, but apparently my fellow members don't agree with us. I'm only one vote.
If we could just request, then, what additional information is being asked from the other board members through you, the chair? Mark's been doing this a lot longer than I have. I don't know how to prepare for the next meeting, so please, please educate us on what you're looking for from us. Do we need to have our consultants back here to present again the information that's already been presented?
I think one of the issues that came up was the contamination of water, and I'm wondering if we can have some type of a back-and-forth with the city of Worcester. If there is any, God forbid, horrible spillage, they can put in some type of over-the-ground pipes temporarily to feed the town.
Who would pay for that?
I mean, that's secondary right now. Probably the owner of the, whoever made the spillage.
What, if I might, while I respect...
We're not, this, just, this is a conversation now, this is not, the public hearing's over for the night, but we're having a discussion.
I didn't hear a vote on the...
You're looking for direction, so go ahead.
I didn't hear a vote on the continuation yet. If there is a, that concern exists today because the catastrophic event can happen because there are public ways within Zone Two today. So, any event can occur. This project doesn't do it. With regard to this project's responsibility, what we had indicated back in our presentation to you in February, in response to specific questions asked again tonight, as to how can you trust the developer to follow the operation and maintenance plan, as to making sure the stormwater system, which is the only thing we're creating by this project, impervious area that creates stormwater, is going to be complied with, that we would on an annual basis provide to the town a third-party certification of compliance with the operation and maintenance plan. We're gonna keep our system operating the way it is. Disasters can happen with or without the project. There are other construction sites that exist today in the act of the zone. This isn't a new issue. It's an issue this town, I assume, has some plans in. But to make it, make it the precipice for this development is, with all due respect, I think, unfair for the developer and inconsistent with site plan approval.
Please, you know, you know, we've made it through eight months, let's try to make it through the next couple of minutes.
Mr. Chair, I can simplify this matter. So, the, in terms of contamination on this site or any site in the town, should a well be contaminated? There is existing an emergency connection in Route 20, which would provide that. It's already in place, funded, and constructed. And an agree... And it is, there is a memorandum of understanding in place for that. So, the contingency plan for emergency service of water is already in place.
All right.
You're gonna vote for continuation, right?
Did you have a point of view or a question? Could you please, yes, sir?
I just wanted to say that, you know, meeting DPA standards and MIPA standards are all, they are defined, and that's what, that's the bottom of the sentence, right? And if you meet those, the impact studies that I've read, WPI did one on the Lancaster warehouse, and the recommendations are pretty clear that, you know, you shouldn't build these warehouses within a thousand feet of a residence. That is probably not a DEP standard. You can probably build this warehouse, you can probably build this warehouse within the DEP standards right next to the person's house today, but the recommendations are all the impact...
So, I believe that, that noise is probably, you need to go to the microphone.
But the recommendation in the impact studies are pretty clear about, there's enough experience with these jobs to know that you shouldn't build them in neighborhoods. And, and is that, you know, it's, can you, you know, is it okay just to meet the DEP and the MIPA standards to make everybody happy? And in this case, it's not. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
We have a motion. Give a second. Did you want to say something?
I was going to ask if we could reconsider.
You have to ask somebody to make a motion.
I guess I'm asking for a motion to reconsider the motion that's on the table. I, I understand and appreciate all of the comments that are here this evening, and to Mr. Dunnehy's point, we are not hearing anything that is new, and I, I appreciate the, the idea in the sense that we need to be thinking about our community, and I guarantee you, every single person that is sitting at this table is just like you. We are members of this community, and we are thinking of our community, and I think that we need to be given the opportunity at this point in time to take all of the information that has been provided over these past number of months, over these past over thirteen hours, and all of these reams of paper, to take that time and deliberate and put together a thoughtful condition that works best, and then present it, and will vote on it either in favor or opposed. But I think we're at this point where we need to be given the opportunity to take this inside and take your concerns into account, because nobody's saying anything new here this evening. We're all saying the same things. So, please, I think at this point, it's time for us to sit down and, and talk about how we're going to proceed. So, that's, that's where my motion to reconsider is coming from.
We have, we have a motion in, in a second here, so, but hold on. So... So... And she's asking you to reconsider the motion.
You didn't finish the first motion.
Motion to reconsider.
Are you asking, you're saying...
Then just go on the motion as it is, and...
No, no, wait a minute. What do you, she asked, she's asking us, asking the board to re, to...
Mr. Chair, the proper process for reconsideration at this point would be to follow through with the motion to continue, whether the members deny that at this time and continue, or...
Well, I, we could, they could, somebody could withdraw the motion. I couldn't think of a word.
Sure.
It's up...
I thought this hearing was closed already.
What do you want to do?
It was not voted on, it was only motion.
Let's say motion to continue because nothing is... Motion to continue.
You want to continue the meeting, is that what you're saying? We have a motion to continue, and we have a second, right? Okay, and, and you don't want to withdraw that motion? Okay, so, so, let me, what do we want, the information at the next meeting? Because we're continuing a meeting... I'm sorry, we're not having a discussion with you, we're having a discussion amongst the board. Please.
I think what was brought up about the Route 20 connection should be presented to the board in case of an emergency, because that seems to be the biggest issue right now, and put the people's mind at ease.
That's what you want to know? Is there anything else anybody wants to know?
Just, what he mentioned, maybe put him at ease with a contingency plan.
Excuse me?
Maybe put, maybe help put him at ease with a contingency plan if a water emergency was...
That's gonna be the point of the next meeting? That, that is what we're doing the next meeting? That's all we're doing the next meeting? No, I'm asking a question?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, we have motion in a second to continue so that we can go back and verify what we already know about the connection in Route 20.
Mr. McGoldrick already indicated it exists.
What?
Mr. McGoldrick has already indicated to you, there is a plan in place, a written memory of it or understanding, and an existing physical condition with the city of Worcester. What additional information?
I don't know yet.
How it works and how quickly can we put it into operation?
Please, this is a public meeting, right now, it's, we've paused the hearing. Mr. Dunnehy, I understand what you're saying, I also can count votes.
I'm just asking the member.
I, I know, but that's what they want to do, that's what they want to do. So, if we, I'm gonna ask for a vote, and if we, and if the vote's to continue, we'll continue. If it's voted not to, then we'll have to decide what we do from there. So, we have a motion in a second to continue. You clarified why you want to continue, it's about being able to get the emergency supply of water to Worcester, I mean, from Worcester, right?
On an eight and a half by eleven...
Whatever, wherever we're getting it.
On an eight and a half by eleven sheet.
Yeah.
Put the number, what, what do we do in case, God forbid, there's an emergency? One, two, three, four, what do we do?
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Okay, so, then, all those in favor of continuing signify by saying aye.
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 Is that two? Three?
Aye.
You're three?
Yes.
And votes opposed? No?
No.
Okay, so, three to two, we're continuing the hearing until August, at the August meeting at, well, the, what's the...
August 1?
August 1? Okay. Okay, that's what we're gonna do. All right, thank you. Okay. Oh, here it is, I pulled it up.
We're still in...
Sorry, we're just on...
I'm sorry, a what? What did you say?
Feel free to email again.
I'm sorry. Andy? Andy, what did you say? What did you just say? You had an email question? All right, we'll look into it. We'll give you an answer in a letter. Okay, we still have a meeting to do. Okay, there. Ms. Palantol, Ms. Palantol, you want us, we have...
Are these yours?
Oh, mine. A request for continuance?
No, you had a request, right. Do you want to do that, or you want to ask, you want to...
We'd like you to vote on it. We made a written request to withdraw both preliminary applications. It needs a vote of the board to authorize it.
Sorry, I can't hear.
Sorry, it was a written request of the board to withdraw the two.
And I said, do you want to, do you want to do that?
Yes, please, thank you, sorry.
All right, so, let us just...
Continue it too.
Well, what do you want to do?
No, I'm facetious. Let's vote and get that off.
All right, so, I'm gonna take these two things out of water so we can just dispose of them. We have a request to withdraw both, the proposed subdivision preliminary plan for 274 Holden, and we have 142 Clinton. They'd like to withdraw those, so...
Make a motion.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close the vote. Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Mark, good luck.
Thanks, Haley. Talk to you later.
Okay, now, I don't know what you guys said to clear that room out, but, all right, so, do you, do you want to go forward tonight?
I think...
Not, not you. I'm sorry, hold on a second. Oh, you are, you're here with... I'm sorry, Mark, I forgot.
To use a historical term, I'm not just a plot and plan. What I'd like to do is this, with your, just to give you an idea. I'd like to ask Mr. Perry, kind of on the fly, to truncate the civil engineering so that most particularly, you can see some information that you didn't see at the last meeting with regard to particularly questions as far as site appearance on it. Very high review of it. We do have the Graves review letter just received, we have not had a chance to digest it. It's not, it's not voluminous, so I think we're gonna be able to resolve most of those issues quickly. So, if we can impose upon you for another fifteen or twenty minutes, I think we can give you some new information and then answer any questions.
Fine with me. I get up early, but I don't have to, so we can... Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, well, thank you. I was trying to join the Google Meet link, but maybe I need to let in. I'm just gonna click the link again here. Yeah, sorry. Denied a couple times. Yeah, yeah, I know. I'll still join, okay. And, like Mark said, we'll, we'll keep it somewhat brief, but we'll be able to give you a good idea of some, some items that we didn't present the first time around when we met back in June. Bear with me here, I'm not so familiar with this Google Meet program. I got it. Are we good? Does anyone need a break?
You probably watched us an hour ago.
Okay. Reminder, I'm John Perry with Langin with the engineers, site civil engineers, also here with Ashan Sukin, who's with our landscape group, Victor, also with our landscape group, Jonathan Scott with the, with Prologis, who's the applicant, we met back in June when we presented to the joint Grafton-Shrewsbury audience, and then Hannah Scher is with, with us as well, our site civil team, so. In a few minutes, Ashan will say a few words as well, but we'll, I'll, I'll start here. So, I'm not going to rehash anything that I already presented in June so we can try to get out of here before midnight. But just did want a quick reminder, this is the Centec Boulevard UPS project. As you can see on the screen here, right, with frontage and access on Centec Boulevard. Site is just about 212 acres altogether. We're developing the eastern portion of that 212 acres, and I wanted to just mention and remind you all that we do have, you know, about seventy percent open space, so we have, we're with this development, we're leaving a hu, just about 148 acres of open space. Here's the site plan. You know, quick reminder, it's a distribution hub. The, the middle of the building is the sortation and distribution area, the sortation and conveyor area, sorry. The longer, kind of skinny wings, that's where inside the brown package cars will load up the goods and then go out for delivery each day. Around the building, we have loading docks and trailer parking, and then off of Centennial from Grafton, access from Grafton, but partially in Shrewsbury, partially in Grafton, we have the employee parking area, which is separate from the truck parking, you know, truck entrance off of Centec. So, we have separated trucks and employee parking. And we did take lots and lots of care to preserve wetlands and preserve as much open space as we physically could. I believe I mentioned this before... I believe I mentioned this before, where oftentimes it's the building that's driving the site plan, and we're trying to fit, you know, a building on a site, in this case, we really maneuvered the building architecture to balance client and tenant needs with the site and open space. Uh, at the last meeting, there was a question about the, um, building height, and we presented on the average building height. Someone had asked, what was the actual maximum building height? So this slide here just shows a cut section of the building from the architect. Uh, in the taller section, as I mentioned before, is that sortation area. And the, the smaller section is that, those wings, this wing here on the end, uh, that is the, the distribution area. And we're showing, you know, um, the tallest portion is forty, just over forty-one feet from first floor to the parapet. And then it's, you know, three and a half feet from the first floor down to the truck court. So the trucks can back in and have them be, you know, essentially level with the, the first floor.
So it's not that big.
Yep, and then over here on the smaller, um, shorter wing, it's, um, you know, it's approximately three feet shorter, essentially, of the same, same type of deal. So all within.
There's a question, question. The brown trucks are literally gonna drive into those buildings?
Correct. So these, these big brown arrows I have here on this architectural plan, those are the five points where the brown trucks actually drive in the building.
Are they all electric? I mean, I'm just kinda curious, um, if the people are gonna wear masks in there because of the fumes from the trucks?
There's a, there's a very significant air handling system in there.
There is, yes.
Yep.
Is that usual now, in the new designs, that they do it, they don't back the trucks up to the dock? They drive in and back up to a dock inside the building?
For UPS, this is the way they've been doing it, they have, they have a few, I think ten or, or fifteen other facilities around the country.
They do have it at Route 140, where they, where they are now, they drive inside?
No, I don't believe they do, that's, it's an older facility. Uh, you, you will still have trucks on the outside, that's the.
Right.
Like the, the tractor trailer trucks that'll be delivering, you know, the goods to be sorted and delivered. Brown package cars, those will be indoors. What I've seen in other similar type facilities are large exterior canopies. You don't wanna be, you know, loading up cardboard boxes in a rainstorm, right? So they need to be covered in, in some way, and this is, um, this is UPS's process.
Hey, one, one quick question, so, the thin piece on the right is the one that's in the Shrewsbury area, right?
Uh, let me go back, right here, y- yes, it is.
Okay.
And that's the town line, the thick dash line, correct.
And that is the one that has more height compared to the other area, right?
No, so in this, in this architectural plan, it, it kinda cuts off, we, it's, it would be way too long to really see anything. So this, this portion here.
Yeah.
Is probably, you know, just kinda cut off here somewhere, I'm, I'm really showing like that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so that's the, that's this area, and then it steps down at that, at that wing there. But, the Shrewsbury portion.
Mm-hmm.
The long wing on the right is identical to what I'm showing here on the left.
Okay.
It's just longer. And again, we usually, I'm gonna, my blue being here, usually you'd see another like this, and it would be symmetrical to the, the left-hand side, and this wouldn't be such a long wing. That's the ideal way to do it, but as you can see, in the site plan, we wanted to make sure we weren't gonna touch that wetland at all. So we, we stretched it out a bit more and it fit better, and we were able to get more in Shrewsbury. Okay, so, we wanted to present quickly on the, the site grading, and what this plan shows, uh, I don't wanna get into like minutia of grading, unless you want me to, but really what this shows is, the red is cut excavation, and the green is fill. Okay, so there's a, there's a good amount of earth work, we're gonna be taking, you know, taking earth from one spot and basically placing it in another. And we've, um, very deliberately balanced the site to limit the amount of construction, you know, trucks coming in and out there, obviously still will be, quite a bit of construction activity during that process, but we have balanced the site. Say for some topsoil that we, you know, might not be able to reuse on site.
You, you got the soil conditions, that you can use all the stuff there for that?
We're.
You're gonna fill?
Yeah, we're gonna have some rock, you know, a good amount of rock that we're gonna need to blast. So, um, we'll have some good material that we can crush and use on site. Uh, and then, uh, there is some, you know, um, more fine graded glacial till, uh, but below that, we found either rock or good gravelly material. So, based on all the processes and the blending that we can do, we'll be able to reuse most of it, if not all of it, on site.
Just make sure you get real good compassion on the Shrewsbury side.
We will, we will. Okay, so, with that, I wanted to show you some, some cut sections through the site at some key locations, because I know that the two-dimensional plan, um, you know, can be a little difficult to really deduce what's, what's happening. So, we, we cut, um, I think five different sections. And the first one here, you know, looks basically from Stony Hill Road through the site, okay, and looks into the site to the building. And this dashed red line here is intended to show that, you know, this, from a house over on Stony Hill Road, if you're looking out the second-story window, you'd be looking at trees. And obviously, if you were on the ground, you'd be looking at more trees.
I thought that went downhill the other way.
Well, there was another section here, well, for the most part, no, it doesn't actually, it goes downhill, it drops down off of, off of Stony Hill Road a bit, to Summit Brook. But then from Summit Brook, it then climbs back up the hill.
Oh.
Near the, um, you know, the utility easement, here. So there's, there's a good amount of, you know, grade change both, actually you can see that, right? You can see it dropping off to Summit Brook, right here. That's the brook, and then it climbs back up, and then here's the utility easement. And then this is that, one of those retaining walls that we'll need in order to, you know, do the grading. Moving down a bit, and this is where that red and the green I showed before, right, this is in a cut area here. So again, you can see, just beyond the utility easement, we'll be cutting into the hillside, as opposed to filling with a retaining wall. So that building elevation didn't change at all, right, it's just the ground elevation changed. So again, this is a cut from Quail Hollow Drive, um, showing that, you know, even more so, you'll be looking through trees, actually, even if the trees weren't there, you'd just see dirt. Uh, we prepared a section through, from Centec Boulevard. And there's not a whole lot of grade change there, honestly, from the road to where the building is, but, you know, it's thirteen hundred feet, give or take, or twelve hundred feet. And we will be maintaining, you can see it here, a nice natural buffer along Centec Boulevard to screen, we will have some, a small truck parking area near Centec Boulevard, but we specifically wanted to maintain that, you know, swath of, of trees there, and we did go out there and look at it specifically to, to see what type of trees it is, and there are a lot of large evergreens, not just, you know, deciduous. I know this is Grafton, but, um, I wanted to just give you a complete picture, uh, 'cause I'm sure a lot of you guys drive up Westboro Road as well. Um, this is a section from Westboro Road, looking, you know, you'd be looking kinda over the commuter rail, which is here, and then up into the site.
Is that where the sixty-four retaining wall is?
Yes. Yep, so that's along this back edge here, the southernmost or, or westernmost portion, that's where the retaining wall is the largest.
That's the cross-section from the MBTA station?
Uh, the station's down here.
Okay.
This is just.
Okay, yep.
From the road, really, we kinda picked a, a point closest to that retaining wall, really, we wanted to show.
There's like a mountain of rock right behind the engine station.
Is there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, and then you, and there's a lot of trees there too, so you wouldn't, um, you likely wouldn't see anything. Uh, and then one more we did, again, just to show how it looks through, um, this is that large inundated ponding area to the west there. That's, um, mostly, if not all, in, uh, in Grafton. And that's, you know, to the nearest road, which is, you know, Nelson Street, is about three thousand feet, it's about six tenths of a mile, give or take. And you have to, you know, look through lots of trees, and then you have the open body of water there as well, to see. Okay, so, I'll touch briefly on stormwater, and I'll try not to bore you too much, but we wanted to, you know, state that we have met all of the state and local stormwater standards. As Mark mentioned a minute ago, we did get our peer review letter from Graves. And, you know, there were a few items to address, but there's, in my opinion, nothing that would change any of the project's scope. It was really a lot of, um, minor, you know, items. No major comments at all, and we will address those in short order. Now, the way we are meeting the stormwater standards is through a series of stormwater best management practices. We have twelve different, um, either ponds, infiltration basins, rain gardens. So the, the cyan, kinda light blue color, represents infiltration basins, which we tried to use as much as we, you know, could to make a, a nice natural vegetated feel, um, get as much groundwater recharge and stormwater quality volume as we can. This orange would be underground detention, and we're purposely not doing infiltration, because we wanna, we don't wanna let that water out into the fill, essentially. Uh, these blue areas here are detention, as opposed to infiltration, which is based on soil conditions, and, you know, proximity to, to edge. Uh, the green are some subsurface, um, leaching chambers within the employee parking lot, 'cause we do have some good soil conditions there, so we are able to get infiltration, and then this purple, uh, would be a bio-retention area, which is essentially a, a small infiltration basin, but with a different type of soil media. So, just a couple stock images here, you know, typical infiltration basin, again, it's nice and open, it's vegetated, it's natural-looking, same with the bio-retention area. Uh, and then these you'll never even see, right, these are just those open graded subsurface chambers under the employee parking lot, in order to promote recharge, question?
Um, that bio, the bio-retention area that you just referenced, is that within the wetlands area, or is that on the?
No, it's a stormwater feature, so I'll zoom in here a little bit.
Okay.
Yep, it's not within the wetlands, um, we're not proposing to touch any wetlands, or the buffer, or the, you know, the, the no-touch zones. It was really just a means to, um, it's a little different from infiltration basin. You have a, a soil media that the water actually percolates through within underdrain, so it gets a little more like filtration that way. But in this case, I don't believe we had, you know, um, adequate separation of groundwater in order to just infiltrate right to the ground. So we wanted to get our filtration, it's basically acting as a filter.
Sure, I just wasn't sure if that was near, I, I was trying to recall where the wetlands area was, and I thought it was within that, that general area.
Yeah, this is, just, since we're on the topic, there's this large, isolated wetland here, um, that we're fully respecting.
Okay.
Typical, you know, treatment train that we're using here to achieve our water quality, we're gonna be doing street sweeping with an operations maintenance plan. Interesting. Let me stop sharing for a second.
Did you catch the wetland area, the mouse?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Let me just re-present. Okay, I think we're good. Um, we'll have, you know, deep sump, hodecatch basins, we'll have proprietary water quality units where we need them to achieve pretreatment. Again, we'll have infiltration basins, and then if there is overflow from those infiltration areas, uh, we'll have these nice level spreaders to spread the flow out, so you're not creating like a, a point discharge. Trying to, uh, eliminate any erosion potential. Um, I'm not gonna get into a lot of numbers, but I did wanna show this, so, a couple of the important stormwater standards that we need to meet are water quality volume, so basically, the, the volume of water that's either being cleaned through, uh, proprietary, like, filter-type unit, or it's being recharged just into the ground. And we're doubling the requirement, what we have, we're required to have about a hundred and fifty cubic feet, and we're over three hundred thousand. Same with our recharge volume, so, you know, when you have natural land, or vegetated land, a portion of the rainwater filters into the ground. When you're putting pavement or hardscape on, on top of that, right, from the, from the development, that won't happen naturally. So you need to provide a means to recharge the groundwater. And we do that through our infiltration basins, for the most part, okay? And so, there's a, there's a calculation in the stormwater standards that provides what you are required to recharge, and through our design, we're recharging four point four times that amount. Okay, so, quickly on utilities, um, alright, we have a legend here, so I'll start with the water. We are, we are getting water from Centennial Drive in Grafton, and we've had a few meetings now with the, um, the Grafton Water Department to, to vet that through, and we're still in conversations with them. Just to talk through some specifics, um, you can see here that we bring it up off of Centennial, into the site, into the building, there'll be meters. Uh, essentially, there'll be a big fire loop around the building, that's why this is all looped around, uh, to provide hydrants and connections to our fire suppression service in the building. Uh, you see this type of little offshoot here in the employee parking lot, and these ones here, that's for fire hydrants. So we're gonna have hydrants all throughout. The green is the sewer, we will have two sewer pump stations on site. Um, one roughly, oh, they're labeled, here, and another one here. And both of those will, uh, pump out to Centennial Drive, where there is gravity sewer right there. Electric, uh, we intend to get off of, um, Centec Boulevard, and we're in conversations with, uh, Selco about that. We'll bring that in to, uh, the building to feed, you know, the, the main warehouse building and the ancillary uses as well. And then gas, again, from Centennial Drive, so for the most part, our utilities are coming in from Centennial. And we're, we're, we're talking to all the appropriate, uh, agencies on those.
Do you have to use fire pumps in there? Do they, Grafton have enough, don't have enough?
We will, we will have a fire pump, yep. And it's gonna go in this, uh, this is, this is a room, it's a mechanical room in this wash station here.
I just, I just get into the minutia of that.
Yep.
I have a question on the sewer, uh, line there, is that connected to the Wust, sorry, Shrewsbury sewer, or does Grafton have it too?
It's connected to the Grafton sewer.
Oh, Grafton sewer?
Yep. Correct.
We don't, we don't have enough water down there, you, you, we don't, we don't have water down there, so they have to get it from Grafton.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
So, I, I thought we have sewer down there either, right?
Well, that's in Gra, that's, Centennial's on Gra, uh, in Grafton there, you know, so.
No, right, but I mean, coming down Centec.
Yeah, no, so, so Centec only has power.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing else, and probably stormwater, just for the street, but, that's it. Okay, and I'm gonna pass over to Ashan, just to do a couple minutes on lighting and landscaping.
Vic, let's ask you one question. Do you know how much you're cleaning the water that's being discharged, like, what percent, not how much of it, but what percentage cleaner or not cleaner is?
So the standard that we need to meet in Shrewsbury, because you're an MS4 community, is greater than the state. So the state requires that you provide eighty percent, um, removal of the total suspended solids, like sand and salt particles. Shrewsbury, we're required to remove ninety percent. Shrewsbury, we're required to remove ninety percent, which we're meeting, actually beating that for the most part. And then also, in Shrewsbury, with the MS four standards, we need to remove phosphorus as well. So we, we're removing, we're required to remove sixty percent total phosphorus. A calculation showed we're actually moving, removing quite a lot more than that.
Good evening, my name is Ashan Sukin. As Ashan said, I'm the project landscape architect at Langen. So I'll be talking about the lighting design and the planting design. So we'll start off with the lighting plan here. As you can see on the slide, there's a variety of drive aisles and parking lots that require site lighting. So in order to provide the minimum security levels, we're basing it off IESNA, which is International Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, to meet that health and safety welfare guideline. So for the actual, you know, design of the poles and the building mounted, we have a mixture of pole-mounted fixtures along, you know, the parking areas I mentioned and driveways. And then areas closer to the building that you see that are in pink are building-mounted. And the lighting really, you know, what really drove the concept here was that the lighting focuses on the development areas only. So kinda shining the lights away from property line, from wetlands. We really wanted to minimize the light pollution and not, you know, go beyond what's required. So in the second slide.
Page down.
Page down. So the fixtures here, this is what we're proposing to use. Aesthetically, you know, we, these are our typical parking lot fixtures that we use for settings like this. We are proposing houseside shields. The ones that we have here are, you know, directly placed behind the LED bulb. It's not the ones that would be the large ones behind the fixture. These get better control and they are also dark sky compliant. So just so you know, dark sky compliant, they're fixtures that are full cutoff and focus their lights downward, no uplights. And really, again, reducing the light pollution. So for the, the planting plan here, you can see that on Centec, we are preserving a lot of the existing trees that you see on the frontage. And on top of that, close to the parking lot, we're adding in additional trees as well to the buffer strip to meet the ordinance requirement. And kind of an overview on the, the landscape design, we really, you know, strategically have the plants that would adapt to the condition of the site, you know, depending on the topography, the view sheds, and really the general layout of the use. And where we have open space, as John mentioned previously, like the basins or any areas that might be disturbed by grading, we have a native meadow that's gonna promote wildlife and, you know, habitat to really give out those pollinator areas. And again, to cover the, the species, everything that we're selecting here are native and local to the areas. You know, you see a lot of these trees locally and they're thriving. So we're, you know, pretty confident of these selections that we're proposing onto the site.
Is Grafton an Asian long-horned beetle community or just?
Long-horned beetle.
Asian long-horned beetle? Grafton is too?
They have the requirement, I don't know if they have it in, in their community, but similar requirements.
No, they run to that, that's what I mean, they run to that.
Yep, yeah, so these are our species. And just wanna cover on irrigation real quick. There's no proposed permanent irrigation, so only temporary irrigation during the establishment period for the planting. Any questions on lighting and lighting?
Yeah, I almost feel like we heard this before, just in the other side of town, so.
So that's a little bit of a Reader's Digest, not to, not to speed it up, but out of respect. We will get our letter of response to Graves. And probably on us, the schedule we've talked about before, the August meeting would be traffic. And so we'd probably come back and try to close out Civil, so you'll see all these folks again probably in September. And obviously be able to answer questions at a, hopefully an early hour if they're ready at that time that we can deal with. If the plan is still traffic for next week, I guess, just to note, it, that is not something that can be done in a Reader's Digest version.
Sorry, what?
It, it can't be done in a short fashion. That's gonna need a block of time.
I thought we were gonna do almost a whole meeting that.
Okay, that's, that's fine with me, as long as we don't start at ten o'clock. Okay, that's great.
Maybe we can put you on first. Not make the point.
Mr. Chair, I have two very broad questions.
Sure.
Again, are there any ConCom filings or issues of whether it be Grafton or Shrewsbury at all at the site?
There's filings in both communities. It's applicable under both the local bylaw and the state. The initial meeting of both conservation commissions has occurred and the second is scheduled for next week. The work within Shrewsbury, just to tell you, it all complies with the local setbacks as far as no-touch and no-disturb areas. All of it represents at the most work within buffer zones. There's no alteration at all. There's a small alteration of a locally jurisdictional wetland in Grafton. Other than that, it's also buffer water on work.
And my other one is MEPA, what aspects does MEPA apply? And when do you plan to apply any, any broad idea?
It's, it's a fair question and it's somewhat interesting. The project does not trigger MEPA review because the project itself does not require any state permit. The distance of the site access and the fact that, that the site itself doesn't front or butt on a state highway takes it outside of Mastod jurisdiction, which would be the only possible case. Having said that, we've been in dialogue with Mastod for better than six months and they're certainly aware of it. And we've talked with, we've talked with town staff about both near-term and long-term improvements that we'll, we will be assisting the town to make to particularly the Centec Route twenty intersection. But without the state action, there is no MEPA jurisdiction.
How about the impervious area like this, a lot of area, right?
We would trigger any one of the thresholds if we had a state permit. But under MEPA, you need both to go through a threshold and some applicable state action.
So, they, you don't have to do any of the MEPA stuff then?
That's correct.
And they can't, just for our education, they, they can't require you to do it on the?
Well, I mean, the, the, the regulations provide certain powers to MEPA under certain circumstances. We don't anticipate here. The primary reason for that, just not to take up too much of your time, but, and the primary reason is that the only possible applicable would be Mastod. And as the board knows pretty well, the Route twenty corridor has already been researched essentially completely, including a twenty twenty master plan for, from the Northborough Line to Worcester and Shrewsbury for that work. And as you're probably aware, two components of that have already been done, or have been done or planned. That being the Lake Street intersection was done within conjunction with Market Basket. And Cell Street to Northborough is on the TIPS list beginning for next year. So I guess that's a long way to say the reason we don't concern is, it's not like it needs more research. It simply needs some additional assets for implementation. And prologis, as I indicated in discussions with Mastod and with the town manager's office as to our role in that.
I would be very happy for you to make it two lanes from Centec up the Flins and that could be a contribution. Make it two lanes in each direction. We'll do that, you know, just in the spirit of being good neighbors.
We, we wanna be good neighbors, Mr. Chairman, but maybe not that good.
Not that good? Maybe you can do two lanes on one side.
We, we, in, in candor, you'll hear a lot more about this in, in, in August is, you know, we are looking at being a proportional contributor to the long-range plan. We do think that there are short-term measures that can be implemented. You'll hear those from Mr. Micho in August. And we've been in discussions with the manager's office about making sure that the town has the resources to do that, you know, fairly soon. Probably within the next, you know, probably next year sometime, which would help significantly, particularly some of the issues on Centec, which is just really trying to get alignment right, so.
I'm just curious.
Sure.
Fire protection.
Yep.
You have Shrewsbury and Grafton fire departments responding?
Potentially responding. We have had meetings, actually collaborative meetings, with both the, the departments together, both fire and building. And it has pointed out some details, you know, the, the coupling that is used in Grafton as a different size is used in Shrewsbury, so we've figured out a way that we're gonna take care of that.
Different hydrants or the same?
It's a different coupling size.
It's a different, they use a different bonnet.
Okay.
They, they proposed a, a solution to that.
Right. The primary response will inevitably be Shrewsbury being full-time and being right there at Centec. It's recognized. But we've had great communication and great cooperation in working through a lot of issues that come up when you have a building that straddles a town line.
Also, the water is fed from Grafton, from?
Grafton Water District, right, which is not town property.
Yeah, so Shrewsbury has no qualms about that?
No, it?
Some of that, like, is in Shrewsbury.
Fortune Boulevard actually also gets water from Grafton. But it, it comes cross-country kind of on the backside. That's why we're not tapping into that. But Grafton's anxious to do it. I think we've been talking about doing loop system to improve that whole system, correct?
We've, we've met with Grafton Water Department twice now, maybe three times, to, you know, verify what they have in Centennial, the size, the pressure, we did fire float tests. And there was discussions about possibly connecting it into, into Fortune, but that's still ongoing.
And the same rate will apply to the Shrewsbury side as far as, you know?
Availability of water?
Uh, no, per hundred cubic feet, the rate.
I, I assume the rate's consistent for the building under the code, so. For the fee, for the water rate?
Right.
Yeah, we can verify that, but I would imagine that it's gonna be the same.
Talking about the connection.
They're, they're, they're also, I know, talking with, I believe, the town manager about specifics because they're a Grafton, you know, entity serving a building that is not just in Grafton, right? The legality of that.
Right.
And they're working through that.
Thank you.
Grafton's a water district, right, is it?
Yes.
It's private.
Quasi-private.
Is it Grafton private?
It's quasi.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it's not a water company, it's private, but.
Right, right.
That's all we have unless, obviously, you have any other questions for this evening.
Can I just ask one question?
Absolutely.
Only, but when this thing first came up, when this project first came on our radar screen, this project was gonna be a regional distribution center. And up until kind of recent past, it was not gonna have our brown trucks. This doesn't look like a regional distribution center unless they're sending the brown trucks out a hundred miles from you. What, did, did the focus change? Anybody know if the focus changed of what UPS wanted to do?
You know, I, I would refer to it more as that the, the mission expanded. You know, it still has range of distribution.
But originally, we, we had been told, and even the chairman of the Grafton Board said, this is different than what we first talked about.
It is definitely different than what we talked about in two thousand eighteen.
So, I, I know it's getting off topic, but we were all these three hundred, up to three hundred trucks. What's the service area? There's nobody from UPS here, huh?
Yeah, I mean, we can't speak into the exact, you know, things with the operations, but.
But part of the reason Shrewsbury's concerned is because you got the facility on one forty of Route twenty that we had told is not being replaced. And, and then, you know, they say there's gonna be up to three hundred and twenty brown trucks here. You're just gonna like, really, you're gonna have, you're gonna keep, have this new big one? And you're gonna keep that relatively smaller one a couple of miles down the road? You're not gonna close it? We were told it wasn't gonna close.
It, what we've committed to is that the Route twenty facility is gonna continue to be a UPS facility. How exactly it will be implemented in the entire plan is something that is still being developed by the operations people. And obviously, they've got a fair amount of time. But there isn't a plan that is somehow not an excess, there's no plan that is an excess asset that is gonna be used by UPS in some fashion. What it will be, it will be determined later.
Then the other thing was kinda interesting, it's like they're contributing all the money to, to bring the sewer to it because they need to, I was like, really, they're gonna keep it open? They're gonna spend a million dollars on something they're not gonna keep? But they're just, the function could change.
Correct, exactly, exactly. That's to be determined, so, you know, much like the function of this building changed since two thousand eighteen.
Okay. Anything else that you spoke?
If you don't have anything, we would ask that you continue to your August first meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're not gonna make the last call, I don't think. They have the last call at home. We still got something to do, right? Sorry you guys had to wait so long. The people after you at traffic hearing might, might end up being in the same boat because it's not gonna be this quiet for the traffic hearing, I guarantee you that. So we got endorsed the cleaning board member appointment confirmation sheet. Somebody's gonna sign it. And then the bond release request for five seventy-one Boston Turnpike.
Yeah, so, so the bond release is, so, sorry, just backing up because we're kinda taking those together. So the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Cleaning Board Member Appointment Confirmation Sheet is just an annual confirmation. So we just need you guys to sign that. And that gets sent to the Registry of Deeds so that they can confirm signatures on documents.
I'm not gonna do that with my, my signature. All right.
Yeah, and then, sorry, and so related to that, we should vote to appoint the town engineer to sign approval not required plans.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ed Holland's names are, his name is over those things for like forty years.
So then the, the bond release request, so that's for five seventy-one Boston Turnpike, which is the Fidelity Building. The work there is substantially complete.
Is this, is this wiping it out? Is this the?
Yeah, so this would be a release of the, sorry, it's not a reduction, yeah, so it's a, a release of a full amount of funds.
The town's okay with that.
So, we have motion to approve the bond release?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Voted, so voted, okay, whole business? You better not be. And then we have correspondence, we have emails. I had a number, one, two, three, four. If I counted right, ten letters or emails regarding the, the Kukstoo Project, the KFBI Project. So is there anything else to come forward in open session?
Nope.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Voted, so voted, we are adjourned. Voted, so voted, we are adjourned.